Call the meeting order for February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Tom.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll sign?
I'll sign.
Throw the agenda?
We approve the February nineteenth agenda.
Down the favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting?
I moved to approve the minutes of the February twelfth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Tom Administrator, weekly update.
Good evening, just a few items for you tonight, because we have a very full agenda. I wanted to start by making sure that the board, obviously you know him, but the public, put it out there that this is Mark Roy, he's been to a couple of our meetings in the past. He is the owner of Blue Star Accounting and Advising, he's our financial guru, sat next to Tom McGurty, and together they've gotten us in a lot of good places. So he's going to give an update, talk to you about the fund balance tonight, and a couple other miscellaneous things. First under my update really was to kind of catch you up on some of the things I've been working on since his second full in-house day enacted. He spends the day with the treasurer, doing a variety of miscellaneous things, primarily training. He's given us a lot of hard work on the budgets and on the warrant, so we're looking forward to presenting that to you a little later on in the agenda. Next is to let you know that we have chosen March fifth at four o'clock for the EMA ordinance workshop. By now you should have all seen email, I've got a majority of responses. One of the department heads is not able to make it, and they're gonna meet with Phil one-on-one prior to and bring those recommendations to the workshop. It is only an hour, so please make sure that you've reviewed it, and bring your questions there, so we're hoping to have that completed that evening, it's a fairly short ordinance. Next, you might have saw your email that Bernard Broder sent you a lengthy email regarding the ambulance. He wasn't originally going to come tonight, but once I talked to him and kind of told him what you decided last week about if it gets moved forward at all, it will be on in June, and told him that we were knee-deep in the budget and the equal warrant, he's gonna wait until it gets a little closer to us, swapping warrants. So he'll come and talk to you about those concerns then, but he wanted you to at least read it in advance. So that's why he's not here to go over that. In your packets, not for full discussion tonight, but a little bit of homework, is a draft warrant, as I mentioned, Mark and Lauren worked on it quite a bit today. He's made some recommendations on some consolidation of some articles that is new from last year, so I do ask that you take the time to look at it. A lot of strike-throughs, obviously are removals, underlines are new articles, nothing set in stone, just a starting point. As you know, tonight we're going to be hearing from one of our department heads, and then we're gonna go over some miscellaneous budgets, and then we're gonna be done. So at next week's meeting, we're gonna do an entire overview, an entire town budget, every department from start to finish, so we wanna make sure that everybody's here for that, and we stay on track. Warren Finance is gonna meet on March third and March tenth, they will have the warrant next week, which makes your homework that much more important, because we can't start plugging numbers in until we have a conversation next week about the changes that he's made to warrant. So please look at that if you can. Let's see, what else?
May I ask?
Yes.
Has council looked at the changes?
No.
Have you seen, assuming you've seen these in other towns, Mark? These changes are, based on what you've seen in other towns, I should say.
That's correct.
So presumably they've been looked at by council in those towns, so...
Yeah, sometimes do, sometimes don't. I always recommend that a town, so, I'm not a lawyer, so when I compose articles to people, I always tell them, have your town council look at it. Most of the times, there's no changes, unless it's something that's very, you know...
That's just something to keep in mind, is to look this over, and final copy will send out.
Well, we're gonna run out of time, but that's, I mean, really all he's done, a major change that I've seen, if I'm being direct, is that one of the other, one of the roads and the transfer station thing that you made, knowing, I think I know this for you, made, other than one of them separating it out, I think you'll be okay with it, he's just combined a few departments, we're still voting on them individually, so, there's no major changes. I am gonna have him give us something in writing regarding, or when we get to the carry-forwards. He struck out an article that we've voted on every year, because he says it's just not legally necessary, so, maybe when we get to the carry-forwards, we can talk about that. Other than that, it's just combining a couple, so there's no major changes. I think that is all I have, oh no, I'm sorry, one more thing. So we're gonna double-check the calendar tomorrow, but it looks like as early as next Friday, nomination papers are gonna be available. We have the select minister, overseer of the four, Mr. Winchell's term is up, school committee, Amanda Cobb's term is up, road commissioner for District One is going to be up, so nomination papers will be available, looks like next Friday. The other pressing number is April eleventh, that's the date that is gonna be the deadline for the select board to sign an order calling for a referendum vote in June, but we'll make sure you stay on track for that. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Tom, he's on up?
I've received a call in the final drafts from the auditors of both the town and the school audit. I've looked at the town, I'm gonna take a look at the schools, I don't expect any comments on the school, I just want to take a peek at it, and we may have one final go-around with the auditoriums for any particular change. Mark, have you seen it?
I did. I don't have any, well, there were two things that they asked about, my...
And he answered.
And I believe she responded to that.
She did, saying, she was thankful for the answers, and they were perfect. I ended up sending her the two contracts, the budget and the photocopies, and said that she could find it in there.
They give us any indication once I pass on it, how long will it take them?
Uh, she did not.
Okay.
They usually shouldn't take that long.
Yeah, a couple days, maybe, so hopefully by next Wednesday, we'll have an approved set of financials, okay? Warrant Finance Committee, I met with them last night, I think they're making good progress on reviewing the budgets, and as Jennifer said, we have a calendar that I think is, everyone's in agreement with, with regard to warrant finance and the select board, so I think we're in good shape there. That's all I have to say.
Okay, great. Ed?
Do it backwards, Mary Grant, nothing new, they did, did you get the minutes of their meeting out with some dates of some of the upcoming events? I'll have those next week for you. Nothing on animal control, transfer station, still working on the numbers for the tipping fees. I don't, so the tri-county group got together, all their numbers are in, some towns are using, the idea was to have one company that everybody's gonna use, everybody's kind of splintering off and doing their own thing.
Doesn't work all that well.
Yeah, so, it was different, for different reasons. One of the companies, EcoMaine, would take the trash and the recycling, but didn't want to take the demo. And if they did take some of the demo, they couldn't take all of it, they could take pots and pieces. So that's kind of a quandary for us in a way. One of the other companies, Casella, they would take pots and pieces as well, with different stipulations. Initially, Waste Management came in and said, we can only take, if you choose us, we can only take half of the group's waste, because it's an out-of-state deal. Now with the group splintering, they can take most likely some of the towns. So I've talked to them, I still need to talk to Casella one more time, but the numbers that came in for the tipping fees from Waste Management are extremely good. I guess my big question is, how are we gonna handle this, as far as either going out to bid again on some of this stuff, or are we gonna take the numbers that the tri-county group used for these? We did, you know, we went out to bid for the hauling on, you know, the other stuff, to the greater Portland area. Now if we change and we decide to go with Waste Management, I guess I can release the numbers, I mean, the tipping fee, I don't want to release anything on hauling.
Yeah, I think we're just inside of going out to bid for the other area, right? Is that...
Yeah, 'cause the tri-county, those numbers are public.
They are.
So those other numbers are public anyways, so that, if they were dealing with the tri-county, that...
They gave us different numbers than that, than what they gave, right? They're different numbers than what EcoMaine, what the county came up with, the numbers of Waste Management gave are different.
They're the same numbers as what they gave the, yeah, as what they gave the group.
The concern is, is that we, you know, like I said, we went out to bid for the Scarborough Portland area, you know, and we don't like to, you know, bring up social media and these types of things, but there's misinformation out there already. You know, we went out to bid because we're paying a lot of contractors a lot of money, and like, you know, we follow town policy, and over X amount we go out to bid, something that we do, it's clean, it's transparent, it's good use of your tax money. So we have made no decisions on the hauling, the demo, or the regular trash, so, you know, don't believe everything you read, but at the same time, if you're looking for, we haven't gone out to bid asking people to, giving them the opportunity to take it to Rochester. So to be fair, we should.
But if the entire group had decided to go to Rochester...
Tri-onto still don't...
Would you be going to Rochester?
I don't, I don't think that's the, so, I believe, because it went through the tri-county, that we can just pick one of those. Obviously, everyone's different, because some will only take this, some will only take that, and I didn't realize that Tarkey, no, Tarkey, that's the landfill, Waste Management wasn't able to service everybody, because of some agreements, so that obviously changes because people are going to Eco, or whatever. I think the issue we're having right now is, I think we can accept their number for the tipping, it's the hauling part that we have to worry about, right?
Yeah, I mean, we went out to bid for the hauling of the MSW, the hauling of the demo, but did we not get a tipping fee?
No.
We, okay, so at least if you, at least it's hauling.
The tipping fee was being handled by the tri-county.
I'm fine.
The only thing we gotta worry about, those numbers that you've got, is there hauling including those numbers?
There is a number for Waste Management.
But they're gonna have to submit a bid, so I, that's a fair meeting.
And I've not disclosed that number to anybody.
Okay.
So, I actually haven't even opened his email, so...
Right. So maybe if we go out to bid, just for at least the hauling of demo and MSW to Rochester, we absolutely have to agree.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, and for those on social media, we did not make any decisions here.
We don't even know where it's going at.
There's a huge increase on the transfer station hauling and everything else, so we have to look at these numbers, so...
If in fact we decide to go with Rochester, and I'll put this in a, it actually is already in pretty much a format that I can pass out, 'cause I know Tom wants that, yes, I don't blame you. But you'll be able to look at all the numbers, and when you do, the number for the tipping fee to Rochester is extremely good compared to everything else.
Is the tipping fee disposal?
Yes, yes. I know, there's a bunch of different terms of this stuff, but...
I use them.
Yeah, disposal fee, yeah, it's a good, yeah, yeah, that's what it is, so...
But that may change too, with the trucking, right? If they don't do the trucking, it may change, is that, you mentioned that last week?
It will, but it is so minute, it's not gonna make a difference.
Okay.
So...
So we've gotta...
So I think if we're gonna go out to bid, we should do that post haste.
So with regard to the hauling and disposal, will we be specifying the site, or will we leave it to individual companies to indicate what they...
That's part of the problem, and why, I mean, we went out to bid for the hauling, just 'cause we needed to get it out there and get it done. Well, now, you know, shortly after that's, when Waste Management's been contacting all the towns in the group, realizing that it splintered, trying to get business. So that's when they actually sent Dave the letter, it was forwarded to me, and I contacted them, and, you know...
So it sounds like it's been a pretty good process, from my perspective.
It's been a great process.
I mean, in that this competition has driven some pricing down.
Yes, yes.
So we essentially would take the same bid and just change the location?
Change it to, yeah, turnkey in Rochester.
Okay.
Yeah, in both the MSW and the demo.
So we'll do it, treat it just like we did the first one, go back, I'll do it for a few weeks. And then at that point, we'll put a spreadsheet together, Tom, and present it all at once.
Yeah, you'll have it all.
And we know the budget is good, because that's the worst case.
That's the worst case, okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we go the Rochester route, if we wanted to, the number is so good that we could change something on downflo.
What does that mean?
We, but, I mean, it's a...
The downflo, what is that?
We could, we could, we could lower the budget on downflo.
Oh, okay.
And when you see the numbers, you'll agree, so, but, no, I was pretty impressed, and it's like, this is kind of something we've been looking for.
So, given that we're wrapping up the budget, when do you think we'd have all this information together?
That's why he wants to go out to bid right away, so we'll put it out tomorrow, and it'll go out for, you know, a couple of weeks, I mean, if...
But you can take those numbers you've got now and run those numbers, somebody's gonna beat those numbers, so if you ran those numbers, you'd be safe.
Good. I mean, the numbers we have right now, we're okay with.
They're high.
We're, yeah.
No, I'm talking about the numbers that you've gotten from them.
Yes, yes.
Not, not the ones from the other way.
Right.
I would be inclined not to lower the budget till we had a commitment.
Let it go and...
You get the commitment, 'cause you don't know you're gonna...
Well, that's why I say on town, you know, we could lower it on town floor if we wanted to.
I don't know how I would just feel, that's what I...
Yeah.
If we don't spend it, we'll just have a left, money left over.
Exactly, you just go back in the general fund.
Maybe, do you think it might be a good idea, we only got one bid, that maybe we send these bids, send these out to other haulers that may not have gotten this information?
Yeah, well, we did, I mean, just, we did send...
It was like six different people we sent it out to.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, we sent it to seven, I mean, I have a list inside, we told them, but we, Ed and I sat down, gave you a list of several places, so we sent them back.
I was just surprised we only got one.
Newspaper, went in the newspaper, went on social media, we did everything, I got a book.
Yeah, I mean, there was A1, Winways, out of Elliott, or what's that, wherever they're out of.
Yeah, there was eleven of them.
Yeah, there was a number of them.
At least seven.
Yeah.
Cool. You all, you all set?
That's all I got.
Can I just, you know, you mentioned social media, I'll say something.
I did put a bid on there too.
I just think when people have questions about, you know, what the town is doing, and the suggestions that maybe they're not following the right rules, or there's something mysterious going on, just pick up the phone and call Jennifer, and she'll tell you what the truth is, and hopefully we can avoid things going out on social media, we get people all riled up, and it's just not true. So that creates a lot of negative energy in the community that we don't need, I mean, it undercuts everything we're trying to get done.
Well, it makes it tough on us too, because, hey, you're looking at the bids and stuff, and you got people rooting for this guy, so individually hit them, even though there's prices and there's that difference, you know, we're trying to do our job, we love loyalty, you know, and it's been times when we've gone with a higher bid, because, you know, you got your quality, this and that, and, but, there's a lot of money, you know?
There's a huge amount of money.
Yeah, with social media, people can do what they want to do, just reminding people to try to keep an eye on that, and, you know, don't stir things up unnecessarily.
There wasn't one part of that post, with the exception of what Jennifer put on there, that was true.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, awesome, okay, Dan?
I have now update for the fire department. The recreation committee had a meeting this past Monday that went really well, their newly-elected chair, Cassandra, kind of took over the reins, they kind of ran the meeting, they kind of reviewed a bunch about the basketball season, last week was the last week of games, there were some delayed games due to weather, there's some positive feedback, the first time the rec has been able to play Milton, and they had really good feedback from the coaches in place, although they lost some of the games, they said that the kids were really excited to look, looking forward to playing active teams again, which is great. One of the board members talked about, it was the first time their kids, their kids played the game, they learned a lot from their coach, so a lot of positive feedback from that season, and I believe that this week, information should be going, because that's for the closing ceremonies, which, to kind of resolve some of the chaos of last previous years, were broken up into two different sections, so that parents can hear their kids, and kind of accolades that the coaches have to say of them. I did spend some time after the meeting with our rec director and the new chair, just kind of going over how to run some meetings, and give them advice and support there. The rec director has worked really hard finishing this budget, really great job on the budget, excited for you folks to see it all, but also in just regards to getting ready for the upcoming season, getting out information about what the town, what their department's gonna do, are they gonna do a full baseball season here, and if not, having a backup plan for clinicals at Sanford, so, a lot of great things going on in the rec department, and the constumination force meeting, no new updates, we'll be also going over their budget this, and I'll have some more talk about some of the changes come that time. And that's it.
Cool, cool. John?
I don't have anything for school or cemetery. Tomorrow night, the planning board will be looking at a sketch plan for a small subdivision on Fox's Ridge, and Jason's still dealing with some outstanding fines and issues around town, and that's about it.
Cool, okay. Roads and road committee, I do not have an update?
Oh, we do, sorry.
I do?
Yes.
What am I missing?
Jay Ward called today, he was busy, I had to win the voicemail, sorry about that.
Okay, so I called today.
Be called today, we're busy. He's scheduled a meeting in March, wrote the meeting, he asked me to share with you, I'm sorry, Dave, I just, March fourth, March third is warrant finance, it'll be March fourth at six o'clock.
Okay, well, I guess the road committee's gonna meet on March fourth. And I do not have anything from municipal grounds at the moment. So we're gonna move on to the department head, committee chair updates, do we have any?
Leslie Verland, warrant finance chair, we had our meeting last night, and we went over all the budgets that were presented last week, and there was only one question that we really had on those budgets, which was on the cemetery committee, and what they were planning to do with the money that they're requesting, so, we'd like to see a plan. Tom, I sent that email to Jennifer just last night, and she indicated that the selectmen have the same concerns.
I said, what I took from last week's meeting, when she went through the breakdown, was that you would be interested in maybe her spending some of that down as well, and that what ties it all together is waiting for a response from May Municipal, so we sent that email regarding coverage for the chainsaws and those types of things, because I think we gotta decide if that's a good idea, and if the trailer should be bought, before we decide how much of that may or may not, you know, offset the budget. So that email was sent to legal last Friday, along with the request regarding the private vehicles, so we didn't refer to it.
This is speaking to the reserve that they have?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just give my two cents worth, I don't like reserves, and so, if they have a need for funds, let them put it in a budget, and it'll be very transparent about how much money they have, and what is being spent on, and I personally don't think they need a reserve, that's my take.
Well, our concern was that they have ten thousand in a reserve, and they're asking for ten thousand more for projects, but they never, there's no detail on what the projects are.
Yeah, I agree.
What we...
I'm sure they'll pull that together, I don't think they got this question when they were in, and they've been very responsive. They've been very responsive, I'm sure they'll do a, go respond to this.
And there was two requests from the committee, one of them is that they wanted a draft copy of the audit, if possible.
I, I'm sorry, I, it's just my practice, what specifically are you looking for before I answer? You want the whole audit, or are you looking for a particular number?
Well, we're looking for the financials.
Okay, I would suggest, I'm not gonna suggest, they will not be released until they've been issued by the auditor, I'm sorry, I just, otherwise you get drafts out there, and, you know, you start, have to answer questions, why did they change, and all of that, so, if there's something specific in there you'd like to know, I'm happy to talk with you offline.
Okay, and then did I understand correctly that you think it's gonna be finalized maybe next week?
That's my hope. Okay.
All right, so at that point, if we could have it sent, emailed, and hard copies in my box, so I can get, you know, 'cause some of my members don't use email.
As soon as it's received, yep, and the board gets it first, absolutely.
And then the other thing that they wanted me to ask was, and I understand this used to be done previously, is the, in each article, there would be, they calculate the effect of the article, the article on the mill rate?
I'm sorry, say that again?
On detection.
Detection. When is that done?
I don't know.
There's really no way, is there a way to do that prior to, if you're, well, no, because...
That would only work in the old past.
Right, because your assessor doesn't finish the assessments for the, for all of the properties, until just before the tax commitment is done in sometime in July, right? Then you can't really calculate the mill rate, because the mill rate is based off of assessed property values as of April first.
All right, I mean, I had never seen that on any, but I've only, I've only been, you know, we have, these budgets are less than ten bucks.
We have all of the town reports, so whoever had the idea, I'd love to know what year was, so we could look at it. No, I'm not being serious, I'd really like to look at it, so I'd love to hear what year that was on, so I'd love to see it.
Okay.
You do recall last year, we gave a forecast of what the tax rate would be if everything was approved? So we presented that at town meeting, we said, if everything is in this, is approved, if our estimates of revenue are correct, which we hadn't really analyzed, then we think the tax rate will go from here to here, and so, I think it achieves the same thing, or a very similar thing.
All right, all right. Thanks, all right, and that's it, thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see any, I guess we'll move on.
Yeah.
No old business, we have new business, Blue Star Accounting, fun balance policy.
You've got three documents, make sure you have them in front of you, this is gonna whip right through.
So the first one is the, Eric, you wanna talk about that one? I thought you were talking about the fund balance policy.
Oh, no, the fund balancing first, go ahead.
So Tom had me update the fund balance policy, do you have a copy of that?
They all got copies last week, that's why they made the new ones.
Okay, so I didn't know what you guys wanted me to talk about with the fund balance.
Let me just, let me introduce it, and then we can talk a little bit about it. We've had a fund balance policy at both the town and the school for a number of years. We asked Mark to take a look at the percentages that are in that policy that establish sort of a high and low threshold targets, if you will, for what our undesigned fund balance or reserve should be, and to ask him to take a look at those, and whether or not they were reasonable. He took it upon himself to present a redrafted policy, which, did we distribute that?
Yes.
Do we distribute it to the public?
Um, no.
Okay, well, let me tell you, it did a really nice job of explaining why you need undesigned fund balance or reserves, and I thought it was very informative and thoughtful about why, why a town needs to have reserves, and then it went through that, and it explained then what the thresholds you have seen, given your experience with other towns. You've audited a whole number of towns in your career, and so you've had an experience to see what other towns are doing, and so I thought it was a great policy, the board has looked at it, but I think what would be helpful, if you could describe if there's any change to those percentages that you've seen.
Yeah, right, so, thank you for the compliments. Right, a fund balance policy is for what the town wants to have for its unassigned fund up, meaning what hasn't been appropriated for use yet, but will be, is available for use for a bunch of different reasons that I outlined in the policy, primarily, it helps with financial stability, financial flexibility, long-term fiscal health, and the reasons why you want that. The Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national association of treasurers and accountants, they provide a general rule of thumb that you should have about two months' worth of your expenditures in unassigned fund balance, and that's just a general rule of thumb. That amount gets changed depending on the specifics of your town, right? So two months is about eighteen percent, right? It's just over eighteen, seventeen or eighteen percent.
Seventeen, yes, sixteen point six seven.
Yeah, sixteen point six seven percent, right?
You should see what these two talk.
So, so two months is sixteen percent, and then they say that, you know, or in general, the concept is, look, the more volatile your expenditures might be, or more volatile the economic forecast is going to be, meaning broader economic forecast, the greater the fund balance that you would necessarily want to have, to help you maintain that financial stability and financial flexibility. The less, you know, volatile, the less you need of an unassigned fund balance. Also, the more reserves that you have, right, that essentially you can internally borrow from, even though it's not recommended, but basically you're internally borrowing from, because it allows for financial stability, without having to go back to the town to raise additional taxes, the less of a fund balance you need, the more reserves that you have, I mean, the less reserves that you have, the higher fund balance. And then, in general, the idea is that the unassigned fund balance helps also for long-term stability, tax stability, so, in good years, or in good economic times, you generally want to have that bumped up a bit, because in bad economic times, that's when you're most likely to be using it to help offset... because in bad economic times, that's when you're most likely to, to be using it to help offset, um, uh, increases in taxes, right? When people can't afford to do it, right? Uh, so, uh, in the, a fund balance policy shouldn't really have a specific target, although I've seen those like, oh, it has to be whatever, right? Like, for example, a state statute for schools is that it's a specific amount, right? Five percent or whatever it is. Uh, I don't recommend that. First of all, it's hard to do. It's hard to actually hit that, so you're never actually hitting your target. Uh, second, it doesn't allow for flexibility, which doesn't make that much sense when you have different schools in different places that have different, you know, realities. Uh, but whatever, that's how the statute is. The benefit for municipal is you get to choose. My recommendation is that you have a range, uh, and that you move in among that range depending on the particular factors, right? Uh, so the range, uh, that I suggest is anywhere between fifteen percent of your expenditures, which is roughly two percent, uh, two months' worth, up to twenty-five percent, uh, which is three months' worth. Uh, so anywhere between two and three months' worth of expenditures. Now, that's not a change really from what your fund balance policy is now, but it does, uh, the, the fund balance wording or the policy wording does provide a bit more explanation, because often, and I, I even write in there, um, it's not, it's, it's unwise to think that you don't need to have a, a fund balance, an unassigned fund balance, and it's also unwise to think that the unassigned fund balance is money that is not being used. It actually is being used for that purpose of establishing that stability and, uh, and flexibility, and so that's why you should always maintain one. Uh, I've run into towns and schools where they maintain very low fund balances, uh, and, uh, one example was actually during COVID, right? I had a school where, because of the state statute, before COVID was three percent, right? You can't have one three percent. Uh, and they didn't have any reserves or anything like that. So then, this is an example of being able to take advantage of opportunities as they come up, right? Your financial flexibility. So now COVID comes through, and they are awarded, or can be awarded, um, X amount of dollars for improving the air quality systems in their schools and buying buses and all that. But they didn't, those are all reimbursement grants. They didn't have the cash upfront to pay for those. So at first, they're like, oh, we're going hot, wow, let's go ahead and buy these things, not realizing what we also still need to make payroll every single time. And if you don't have enough ca, if you don't have a, uh, a too slim of an unassigned fund balance, uh, you run into cash flow problems, or you can run into cash flow problems, but more often, you're not able to take advantage of things, opportunities that come up.
But Mark, so, say the school is a five percent
Yeah.
on there, but maybe because the town itself has their own fund balance, is that why that, that?
That's correct. This is talking specifically about the municipal, municipal status unassigned fund balance.
But that percentage is applied to the total town budget, including the school?
Uh, that's correct. You want, you want to, in terms of, in terms of, in terms of expenditures, right?
So that the town budget is around five million, the school is around six roughly, and we've been applying our percentage to five million. And we should be applying it to the eleven million. So there'll be some, some changes there.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's, uh, that's the fund balance policy draft, and you guys.
What's the approval process gonna be?
Someone make a motion. We're ready to go. We've had it for a few weeks.
This doesn't require any other approval.
We already have it. We already have a policy in place. You're just updating, you're a minute.
So I moved to update the fund balance policy with the policy that the selectmen received last week.
Is that good? All in favor?
Have to run, send the truth in for the time.
Okay, uh, kind of related to that, um, Tom wanted to, or Tom had mentioned and had a discussion with me about the reserves. He actually mentioned it again tonight, but he doesn't, uh, particularly like reserves. And then there's also been kind of a, another conversation going on about having a, um, a, a unified capital improvement policy, or capital improvement plan for the, uh, for the town. Uh, so, uh, a part of your package, you have this list. This is the, um, monthly list of, uh, reserves that, um, that the town has. And you can see in there, there are a ton of reserves. Um, so there are a couple of different ways that reserves are created. Anything that is externally created, meaning the town gets a grant, uh, somebody comes in, makes a donation to the neighbors helping neighbors, uh, any of those, anything that is external is automatically separate from the general fund. People don't have, you don't have a say in, in that way. There's no, you know, need to say, hey, can we carry that forward from one year to the next? By definition, it's not part of your general fund, right? Uh, then there are other reserves that are created at town meeting, right? So every year you have a reserve, this, this past year you had a, um, a, uh, a warrant article to create the H Road Project Fund, right? Where you want to transfer money out so that you can do this, um, uh, project. Uh, and the reason why you're transferring the money out, out of the general fund into its own separate fund is so that the money will automatically carry forward from year to year, right? Any reserves carry forward from year to year once they're separated from the general fund. It is only the general fund appropriations that lapse by statute at the end of each fiscal year, and you have to go back to the townspeople and say, hey, we budgeted, you know, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars for transfer station expenditures, operational expenditures last year. Uh, we only spent eighty thousand. Uh, we wanna spend another hundred thousand this coming year, right? That's the budget process every year, right? Transfers, uh, to reserves, well, that money just sticks around year after year after year. And the problem with having too many reserves is that you lose track of them, and that's evidenced by, you have a bunch of reserves that have not been touched in years, even before, before I even came on, um, that, uh, I don't know why you guys haven't used them or how they were established. I assume they were established properly through the warrant process, but then ultimately, people forget about them. So the recommendation is, you really should have only a few reserves. The externally created ones, nothing you can do about, when you accept the grant, that's gonna be its own, that's gonna be its own fund automatically. Uh, and you're gonna spend that down, uh, for its designated purpose. Once its designated purpose is done, it's gone, right? But other, other funds or other reserves, uh, as you guys, uh, term them here, um, you can create them and destroy them at will by the townspeople, right? The townspeople created them, they can, they can liquidate them back to the general fund or consolidate them as they want. Once a reserve is created, um, however, the, uh, select board is, are the trustees of that reserve, right? So, um, they're the ones that, uh, expend from it. So you have a bunch of capital project funds. Uh, on this listing, anything that starts with sixty and seventies, right? The sixties and seventies reserves or funds, um, those are all capital project funds that really can be consolidated into one comprehensive capital improvement plan, you know, policy or, or system that you use for the town. And that's what I wanted to talk about. Um, so I have developed for my other clients, um, a workbook to help them with the projections on how much needs to be raised and how much is gonna be flowing out every year, um, for capital projects. And so you have two different, uh, things in front of you. You have, uh, this, that's just a listing of a whole bunch of things, uh, a whole bunch of capital, uh, items. And then you have the projections. This is all just printed out from the workbook that I developed. Um, and it's really just for illustrative purposes, so you can see how it works. Uh, what I'm looking for here today, uh, before I move forward with the next steps, is basically buy-in from you guys that, yes, this is kind of the, uh, this is the, uh, uh, manner that we wanna go about doing it, because I didn't wanna waste any time working on this and only to come back a couple of months going, oh, no, we don't wanna do it that way. We wanna do it differently, right? So, uh, just because this is the way that I do it, and it works well, and I suggest doing it that way, so you could certainly do it your own way, however you wanna do it.
So Mark, let's assume we go through this process. We've already, through the work of the Capital Planning Committee,
Yep.
uh, we've got an initial development of what departments have requested for capital over a period of time.
Right.
Ten years maybe, or something?
Yeah, there was something, there was ten years out, yeah.
And so we have that, and so. So the idea is to now, uh, take that information and, uh, have it shared with the selectmen, so we can look at those things, make sure those are the kind of projects that we think are appropriate, revise it as necessary, maybe go back to department heads and, because it's been a year or two, two years? Two years since that was developed. And so we'll have a list of capital projects, capital items that we think we would like, let's say, over the next ten years, maybe longer, maybe twenty. And so this would take up that information of what we think we need, and then look at what kind of funds do we have? What are our various reserve accounts that we have that you've been talking about?
Yep.
Maybe you take and put them all in one account. I personally think that's wise. I don't think you want individual reserve accounts for transfer station, fire department, and so on. It's just, it, these are capital reserves. And what goes in, what comes out in any given year is, it really doesn't matter what department it is, just what
That's correct.
we authorize. It really, it really doesn't matter, and it makes it simpler. We have X amount of capital reserves.
Right.
And so the idea with that, we get to determine how we're gonna pay for that. Do we think we really want these things? And how are we gonna pay for it? Are we gonna draw down our reserves? Are we gonna increase taxes? Are we gonna borrow? Are we gonna try to find grants? Whatever it may be, all of those will become funding sources for that capital plan. And that's what then would be adopted by the select board in terms of what we think is an appropriate way to raise the capital to meet all those capital needs.
Correct. Yes. And the idea is that you're actually planning long-term for it ahead. Uh, and so that you can avoid years where all of a sudden you need, you know, a million dollars, because you've gotta, gotta buy a new pumper truck or a new engine, and then the next year, you don't need to raise that million dollars, so now your taxes go up spikes one year.
You could actually have lines in your budget that say capital reserve funding.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and you might have a, you know, fairly large budget line that, according to that capital plan, if we're gonna meet all these needs, we need to be putting three or four hundred thousand dollars into that reserve each and every year. So there'll be a line item in the budget for that. And the capital plan will say, well, it's gonna be spent that year. There may be nothing. We may wait three years and may, make a big purchase, but this would, the whole idea is to even this out so we don't have these ups and downs, and we're scrambling around trying to find money.
Correct.
So that's, that's the goal here. So I, I think it's a, it's a good plan. It's consistent with what I've seen before.
Well, we talked about it in our workshop, then we were bringing some, uh, department heads in and kinda get an idea, because, I mean, we looked at the capital plan, and, you know, whenever you hook into a department, you're gonna ask for the sky, you know? And, uh, we kinda have to narrow it down to a, you know, what we really wanna stress first. Obviously, the other stuff can come afterwards, but Mark sounds like a good idea, I mean.
And, and generally, as I, I told Tom earlier tonight, uh, when you first put this together, it, you're doing it kind of a couple of iterations just to kinda, you know, work out the kinks of what you really want. So, for example, all the department heads, you get together with department heads, say, okay, what do you think you need? Put in what you think you need, when you think, the fiscal year that you think you're gonna need it, what you think the estimated costs are. You aggregate all of those across the entire, uh, town, and then you, you put it together and you go, okay. This is really what it would cost us. Do we really want all of these things? Do we really need all of these things? And also, do we really need all of these things in those specific years that we're, we're estimating? Because if we can, if we can, uh, spread it out over time, in individually each year, it doesn't mean we necessarily have to raise so much every single year. Um, and then, like, the first iteration, you basically say, well, we're just gonna pay all the cash for it. Usually, um, that's gonna be way too much for people. And then the second or third iteration is when you say, okay, for this particular one, because it's gonna be, you know, four million dollars to rebuild a, a town hall complex, let's finance that. How much of that do we wanna put down? How much are we gonna finance? How long are we gonna finance? So this, uh, I did kind of, as I said, illustrative, just so you could see how it would work as far as a projection. But again, the idea is exactly as Tom said, so that every year, you basically have a warrant article that says how much to raise and appropriate for the capital improvement project fund. And then the, the capital improvement, uh, project committee and the select board are the ones that work through what are we gonna be funding? When are we gonna be funding it? And every year, part of the budget process should be, let's update our bu, our capital improvement plan every single year so that we're refining the dates that we need things, the items that we need, and most importantly, as we get closer and closer to the years where we're buying stuff, what the costs are. Because when, when it's twenty years out, yeah, you can make an estimate of what a fire truck is gonna be twenty years from now, but you're gonna know much better, you know, two years out, right? So as you get closer and closer, you, you figure that out, right?
So how's this sound, everyone?
I have, I have two questions. The first one, we're talking about the difference between the funds. So that means based off of this list, in order for that to happen, we have to vote to have the town consolidate all of these together?
Yeah.
For the sixties and seventies? Yeah, for the sixties and seventies.
Sixties and seventies.
Okay. And then, the second one is, you just named that for the capital projects, this would go through, that it'd be the select board and the capital improvement committee. So we wouldn't be going to town meeting like we do now for some of these capital projects, so we'd kinda just be those.
Well, we'd still have to go to the town meeting.
Okay, okay.
So we're at a town meeting for the annual appropriation to that reserve, right?
He means suspended.
If we, if we had a, in the capital plan, a, a new fire truck,
Yep.
um, we, we could fund that capital plan through this line that we're talking about, you know? But to actually acquire the fire truck, that would require a warrant article to get that approved.
No, no. What, so the way it works is, every year, so every year, the, you are, well, first, you have an established plan. We want to have all these things, and these are the years that we want to have them. But then, once that's placed into a, a fund, just like any of these other funds, uh, the timing of expenditures is basically as you need them for their designated purpose. And that's the, the responsibility of the select board as trustees of the reserve. So for example, if it, if you say, well, I need a new forestry truck, and I'm gonna need it around, uh, twenty thirty-seven, and it's gonna cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, um, you know, twenty thirty-six comes around, and your forestry truck trapped out, and you need one right away. Well, because of the way that this is managed, where you're aggregating everything, it, it can be that the select board can move items, uh, forward in time or backwards in time as needed, so long as it's within confines of the plan, meaning so long as you've already approved that, yeah, we need to buy a forestry truck. We thought it was gonna be twenty thirty-seven, it's now gonna be twenty thirty-six. We're gonna move it up, right? And every year, that's part of the update process, is to say, oh, well, we thought we were gonna need an ambulance, uh, next year. We don't really need an ambulance next year.
That's, that's an option that the town could choose to deploy. That it could fund it and leave it to the select board to decide when it's expended, is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
You could also fund it, but for any significant item required, let, let's say, a dollar threshold. It would have to go back on a warrant. You could choose it.
Yeah.
Personally, I would like that.
My concern was coming. I wanted to make sure.
I'd have a hard time believing it.
It's an option.
You could definitely do it.
In a larger city, that's probably what happens. In a small town, my guess is, people are gonna wanna know, you know, what's being expended, like, in a larger city.
I would think if we were gonna spend eight hundred thousand on a fire truck, that the people would probably wanna know.
I'd wanna be asking the people.
So you could, you could do either way.
You could definitely do it if we want.
If you decide to combine sixties and seventies together, could we word the warrant article to include the future purchases of, of those funds go back to town meeting? Just to make everybody understand that we will do that when the time comes. Do you know what I mean? As part of combining them in that same article, say, with the, you know?
I would, I would, I would, that was my concern when I was hearing it. It didn't sound like it had that.
Just to reassure them that we're gonna do that.
Have, we've, we've established a warrant article for a truck.
No.
Well, to, to fund it.
Right, so the funding.
So we've already established a warrant article for.
You, you established a warrant article to fund the capital plan,
Yeah.
which is derived from.
Not just, not just for one particular item.
Any item.
That's correct. All items, in the capital plan.
Priorities may change, or needs may change, and I wanna make sure the people have.
We can do what we want to do, and, and I think we need to, you know, talk about this aboard and talk about it at a town meeting. But I, I would suggest that for any major person, that it has to go in a separate warrant article, to be approved by townspeople. That would be, now, what's major, I don't know.
It would be fairable that, it would be anything at that point.
And I think that we have a better chance of that article passing if you combine them at the same time with that stipulation, right in the article that you are guaranteeing a vote or requiring a future vote from them.
So, so Mark, what would you suggest? Out of the department heads, a five-year plan, ten-year plan?
Uh, it really depends on the town, right? I mean, I, I work with one town where they have a consolidated one, and they look out twenty-five years, thirty years. Um, and, uh, that works for them. And the reason why is because you don't wanna run in, if you're only limiting it to, let's say, a five-year scope, right? You don't, you know, if you're not thinking, oh, yeah, I need a, we also, I should have added a public safety building to, to that. And now, all of a sudden, what we had been raising. raising every single year, which would, would the intent was to have a nice level amount being raised every single year, now that's all thrown out the window because you were only looking five years out, and then you were like, oh, yeah, maybe we do need a, a ten million dollar public safety building, that had we included it, yes, we would have raised more each year, but it would have been a nice level amount. Now, all of a sudden, because we're definitely gonna need it, and we now need to finance it, and it's gonna have to have, we're gonna have debt service payments, you know, for the next fifteen years, now, all of a sudden, there's this huge spike that people get annoyed with, right? They're like, why are my taxes going up ten percent? You know? And you're like, well, we need a new, need a new town hall that we just didn't think because we were only thinking five years out. And you don't have to think forever, obviously, that's not helpful either, but I would suggest at least ten years out, if you can do it, twenty years out. That's, the, the further out it goes, it's, it's the less, the less impact it has unless it's a very significant purchase.
Well, I mean, there's some departments in town, like the fire department, they have a, you know, trucks only in the last twenty-five years, they know that's gonna happen.
Right.
Those are pretty easy stuff there. I think something like the town hall, you know, save if it was burned down or something, or, you know, do that, that would be something.
Well, I mean, in the, in the capital, in the capital committees, the stuff that I got, that was one of the things, right? There was, well, we're gonna need to do a, a new municipal complex here at some point, and that's gonna be a multi-million dollar project. The rec director was suggesting a community center, that's gonna be fif- ten, fifteen to twenty million dollars. Those are all great. What you wanna do is, when you're first developing this plan, in order to see how much you actually need to raise in order to, in order to get those things that you want, it's good to put everything in there, because then, then you go through with the committee and the select board, and you say, all right, let's prioritize, let's say, yeah, we wanted that, but we don't, also don't want our taxes to go that, that high, so let's take that off, or let's move it further back in time, or further forward in time, so that it's not that much of a burden.
See, what I worry about is, you know, when you get the wish list, and everybody gets the wish list out, and then someone puts on some, like, a new town hall in fifteen years, it's almost an expectation. That's what I worry about.
Uh, well, yeah, but I mean, that's, that's generally what you're trying to do, right?
As the select board, we get to control that.
You're trying to.
We get to say, well, let's not put that in there right now, and, uh, 'cause it's too far out, and we're not sure we're gonna need it, and before it gets in, I would say that goes to a public hearing, and you're talking about it with the public, and see whether or not they think this has merit to pursue or not. So, major projects like that, I think, I think you just gotta over-communicate and solicit feedback from the townspeople.
And the beauty of this is, when, in those years where you have large expenditures, then even if you, like, for, as I was saying, the town that, for example, Greenville does this, right? They don't go and have a warrant article every year for the expenditures that they're gonna need, but you can certainly do that. Bare minimum is, you guys are the trustees of the reserve, you can expend it however you're, you want, when you want, for the designated purpose of that reserve, right? But if you have a warrant article that says, hey, we wanna buy an ambulance this year, the beauty of this is because you've already been setting aside money for it, the impact on the taxes is n- nothing, that's zero. You've already accounted for it in your prior year, so the chance of you actually, you know, the, the warrant article I can understand is great, because now townspeople can say, yeah, right, right?
Yeah, makes sense.
You've been, you've been transparent with us that you're gonna buy this big project, but we've already essentially financed it through our taxes, so it's not gonna have any impact on us from one year to the next, right? It's all part of the comprehensive plan. And, or, the opposite, let's say they say, yeah, no, we don't, you know, yeah, we've been saving for that, you know, fire engine, but, ah, whatever, we all got hoses, right? So, we don't wanna buy a fire engine, right? Now that warrant article votes it down, you guys are not gonna make that expenditure, but because you've been saving for it, now you can attenuate how much you're raising because you've over-saved, right? And you would update your plan accordingly to say, all right, well, we don't, obviously aren't buying a fire engine, so we don't, we have a million dollars more than what we thought we needed, so now, for all of our future plans, how are we going to affect our budget? Uh, how are we gonna affect our project, our future capital project plan, right? So most times, I've never seen it where they go, no, we're not gonna do that, especially if you've already been saving for it, right? Through a, through a thoughtful plan. And yes, I get that it, it does set expectations, but that's kinda what you want to do, you wanna manage those expectations of, yes, this is what we're saving for, this is what we want, because it's gonna deliver the goods and services that the townspeople want, need, or want, or, no, we're not saving for it because we don't think that it's necessary, or the, the cost versus benefit to the town is not worth it.
So the first step here is to develop a plan. And do we have agreement on developing a plan that would include a list of capital projects and a first draft on how we're gonna pay for them?
Yep.
If it sounds, makes sense?
A warrant article to combine these with the stipulation of going back to town meeting?
I, I'd like to look at them, or I think we should all look at them.
Yeah.
You may have some history on them about what they are, and, you know, maybe they shouldn't be combined, but I mean, they look like they could be.
It's already in this draft here.
Okay.
Um, there's two different ones. So you have two different types, like I said, you have a couple different types of reserves. The sixty through seventies are all capital projects, so those can be just combined as one thing. And even ones like, for the example, H road project and county road project, you would still combine them, it's just that the plan, the, the new capital project plan would already have that incorporated to be used for county projects.
Let me, let me ask a question. We got one here, town hall parking lot fund.
Yeah.
It's got fifty-six thousand dollars in it. It was a separate warrant article that was approved by the town, and by having a separate reserve account, we made sure that we stay within that level of our expenditures, and if there's gonna be a need for, to overdraw that, we have to go back to the town to get approval. Whereas if you put it in a consolidated capital reserve account, that wouldn't be necessary.
That's correct.
So that's something for us to think about, whether or not that's, that's a big change.
It does allow for greater flexibility in cases of inflation or changes in costs, right?
I, it's been my experience in my few years here, that tracking that in that way, tracking what was appropriated for particular projects, and how much did we spend, and make sure we don't go over, that's something we spend a fair amount of time on. And I believe this because there's an interest in the public in our doing that. Correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen.
Correct.
So, I, I think that's the only downside I see of that, that the, that this would be quite a change. It would just go into a reserve account. I think we need to see the, I would not do the consolidation until we approve the capital budget. Until we see the capital budget, let's, let's not consolidate these yet, because I think that has other implications that we may not be ready for.
Okay. In the draft, there's also another one, not for capital reserves, talks about some of these that you haven't used, and I really don't know what they're for, and it's just a suggestion for liquidating them back to the general fund like you did last year for the FEMA. So there's one for recreation fund, forest reserve, conservation committee, and the cemeteries, which are all annually funded through your budget anyway, so I don't know why there would be additional funds sitting around.
Okay.
And nobody's tapped into them anyway over the last several years, so.
The rec fund would use a parking lot?
Yeah.
Is that the parking lot?
No.
No, I think we got a separate parking lot reserve. This was just a, I, I think at one time, when there was a surplus in the rec fund account, it was going into a reserve account, is that not right?
It did.
Yeah.
And so, I, I'm not quite sure why we need to do that, maybe there's history we can talk about, but.
Right.
Why that's necessary.
And some of these, like the conservation, I mean, I saw the chair of, Mr. Benjamin's eyes lit up, he probably didn't know that was there, he could buy his signs now.
Yeah, no, that's true too, right? Like, we talked with.
Right, Mr. Benjamin, he's the chair of the conservation committee right here in the front row.
Oh, okay.
And he's wanted approval to buy those signs the next budget, because he didn't have the money. But he could just spend this down now.
It's the same with the veteran cemeteries, we had that discussion with the cemetery committee where there was like, three different money sources, and it's like, well, look, I don't know why you guys have it that way, it either, it either should just be an annual appropriation through your general fund, or.
We'll spend some time.
Use these funds.
Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Okay.
It's given us a lot to thank.
Do you guys have any questions for me, obviously?
Yeah, wait a minute.
Joyce, we got a question. Come right up to the podium.
Would you please introduce Mr. Roy to TV land and to the audience?
I did.
We did.
I think he knows what he does.
She did.
For us. Not, not to the point, this was a fabulous discussion, so let's give him a little more.
Wow.
She did that, she did that at the beginning. I have no idea what you're talking about.
I didn't introduce him.
But, I, I think Jennifer gave a very nice introduction.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not quite sure what else I can say.
I'm gonna praise him, I thanked him, I'm not sure what to say.
He's been working with us for a couple of years, ever since we tried to get, as you recall, we, we're trying to get a, a new independent accounting firm, couldn't find one, because there was nobody out there doing that work, but we wanted to create a second sort of, set of eyes looking over the town's finances, independent, if you will. And we also had a change in the treasurer's position. We're very fortunate that Mark was able to join us. He's provided a lot of depth and back, backstop for the town. Everything that goes on, he's looking at independently of what is being done internally with the staff and the treasurer. And so I think it's a great, he's been a great resource and asset for the town. Does that, does that address it, Jennifer? I mean, Joyce?
I, I, sure.
Thank you. Well, I mean, if you, if you want, so, my firm, I'm a sole proprietor, I have a firm, my, the sole customer base are governments, I provide outsourced comp core services to governments, I provide advice to governments on how to manage their, their accounting, their budgets, I help them with their annual budgets, I help them with capital improvement planning, and then just general advice on how to manage their finances, because what happens in most small towns is it's very difficult to find qualified governmental accountants to do those things, so I do it on an outsourced basis, as opposed to, as opposed to towns trying to find somebody to hire full-time, or even part-time that may or may not be qualified. I also provide training services, so that's what I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, sir. Director, budget presentation. More. Oh, boy. You wanna lead, Rex, huh?
I do, yeah, I know, work's gonna be great. That is not in this one.
I bet it's gonna be in the capital plan now.
Amanda, do you have the print off of?
Yes, I have my own copy.
You guys all have the updated one, don't you?
Yeah.
That's it. Big way, anyway.
Well, it's not colored, Jen, geez.
I don't have a color printer.
Mine is color coded.
It is, it is.
If I have seen.
So thanks for having me in. First and foremost, my first time going through this, so please be patient and understanding, and don't criticize too much. But I wanna also explain a little bit of the lens on how I approach this too. So at the beginning, when I came into this role in October, I came in and introduced myself to all of you in the town, and explained that our first year is really gonna be focusing on setting strong foundations of the existing sports programs before we start really building and doing more and more things. So that's sort of the lens that I took here, so you will see that because of that, there is a very nominal change to the overall budget. And with that, before I just dive into every single one, I do have it separated out by sport or by separate kind of item here, I figured just in the sense of time and making sure, like, just calling attention to the major things, I'll go sport by sport versus line by line, and just highlight any of the major changes, if that's okay. So for soccer, the overall total budget is, there's no change, the major difference here, I moved some of the funding around. The biggest change is the cost of the paint, did a lot of research and found that the paint was less than we were expecting, and we used less than expected, so I changed that around and added a couple of other things that are in there. Also, along with that, before I jump ahead to the next one, the projected income for all of the sports is based on the last two years of registrations, and kind of did the average there, so it's projected, obviously, that's subject to go up or down depending on what we have for registrations and interest in each sport. Any questions from soccer before?
Leslie has approached Mark from the hallway, so, I'm sorry, maybe the back, it's, it's very sensitive in here with the conversation going on in the hallway, so. We, yeah, we don't wanna take away from what you've got to offer.
All right. All right, moving on to basketball, there was an increase in the amount for the balls, I found that this year, we only have one size of ball, where the three different teams should be having three different sizes based on their age group. So our pre-k and kindergarten are using the same size as our six, seven graders. Not the best idea, so, it's, it's still adorable, but not the best idea in terms of learning. So that, and the rec costs per game increased by five, five dollars a game for this season, which thankfully fell within the budget for the season, but I did account for that in this budget proposal. The total overall year-over-year increase for this one is only a hundred and ten dollars. For basketball cheer, the major changes here are really, really small, there is a ten-dollar decrease in uniform cleaning, but there is an increase in the medals in closing ceremony changes there, a little bit there, because the participation has increased so significantly, which is great, and the same goes for the next one, which would be comp for the year-over-year difference for cheer, for basketball cheer, it was a ten-dollar decrease. For competition cheer, there was a year-over-year increase of a hundred dollars, we've had participation nearly double over the last year, so the medal increase did, their closing ceremonies, medals did increase. Thankfully with this one, we have the membership fees that are consistent, the music fee is consistent, and the cheer girls, our boys, order their own uniforms, so there's no uniform cost for the rec. So that was pretty small as well, in terms of a major change. For baseball, there was a previous line item for a Stanford offset, so that was removed, and what I ended up doing was creating two separate line items in here, one for field maintenance to maintain the baseball diamonds that keeps throwing in, so we have that budgeted in here, and then also just miscellaneous baseball expenses, so any items that we might need to run any clinics, or any additional maybe equipment that we need to purchase. Right now, I do think that we're in a really good spot with equipment, but come springtime, we'll see what, what we have. So for that one, because of that Stanford offset decrease, which last year was twenty-one, twenty-five, the decrease for baseball was five hundred and seventy dollars.
And, and just to clarify that, it wasn't actually, this is before man's assignment, it wasn't actually a Stanford line last year, it was, remember, sure, there was rake, there was a bunch of large equipment that I think they renamed the Stanford, so we never had the Stanford in there, we just authorized, the board authorized for us to spend it on that subject.
Thanks, sir. For tumbling, last year there was budgeted for new mats, so that came off this year's budget, no, there are no new mats or equipment that's needed, so basically, the only thing for tumbling really is just the closing ceremonies, so that projected budget, or that year-over-year difference is a negative three hundred dollars.
That's a little negative.
And swim lessons hasn't changed year-over-year, so that's a thing, four, five dollars a person, it covers fifty-six people, so that is nothing there. The tree lighting, I had my first exposure to that this year, I feel like it went a lot smoother than I was expecting it to, but with that being said, we did cut the budget in half based on the needs, we found that what we had worked really well, we do need some new decorations, some new lights and things like that, but I, I do feel very confident But I, I do feel very confident that the six fifty budgeted for this year is more than sufficient to cover what we need. So that resulted in a six hundred and fifty dollar decrease there. The concession stand, there is the startup costs. I did remove the costs that were listed in here last year for picnic tables and hot dog steamers. I just don't think that we're equipped to do anything with that just yet. And really wanna focus on making sure that that snack shack is up and running and actually being utilized and making, you know, having those sales kind of really go through. So with that, that was a thousand dollar decrease from year-over-year. The quarter potty confirmed that that is eighty-five dollars a month, so that is budgeted accordingly for the full year, plus the extra unit that we typically have from June to October during our busiest seasons. So that budget went down eighty-five dollars. And then the last section here, there's the miscellaneous odds and ends. We'll, I mentioned earlier, we really wanna focus on those foundational pieces, but if something does arise for case in point, and we talked about it in the last meeting, we might potentially work with PTG to do a color run. So if that's something that we need to do, this sort of odds and ends will help fill in those gaps for anything that pops up. Also, we're looking for shelving in the shed. That was something that had been on a wish list for quite a while after being in there a few times, I really want that. So I have a little bit of that budget in here. That miscellaneous odds and ends will also help account for some of that general merchandise or that general building material that we potentially need. And then also, the last thing that's brand new that I'm, I'm really excited for, I hope it works, I wanna sign for the rec field in the worst way. I heard a lot of feedback, especially from Wakefield from last summer when they came our fall for soccer, that the field was, it's right around that corner, it's just easy to drive right by. So I really like to put a sign up there after the construction is done. So I did put in a rec budget of twelve hundred dollars for that. And did a ton of research throughout all of this too, and hopefully it all makes sense. But if there's any questions, that is it. The total year-over-year difference is a one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollar decrease, which is about a ten-ish percent decrease from last year.
Amanda, you've done excellent on this budget and everything you've done to date, so I really appreciate it. It's been a pleasure to work with.
You've worked numerous hours talking with everyone, Jen. Thank you for your help with, in supporting her and everyone else. Like I, I told them, I was really excited to see the work that you've done coming in happily this season. Great job.
I'm really bummed it's not color coded.
I'll put it for color coded. I have to read my budget.
Yes.
Do you have any money in here tucked away for unforeseen needs?
That's that five hundred under the miscellaneous odds and ends.
Okay, all right. So you have, you think you have enough to cover you for things that might come up?
I think so, yeah, especially where we're focusing on the main foundations of sports right now. We're not trying to build anything just yet. We really wanna get those buttoned up and in a good spot and consistent before we start adding in a bunch more stuff. So next year's probably gonna look a little different.
You know, it's ten percent on the gross budget. I just wanna let you know that I would look at it on the net, which is about thirteen thousand after revenue. It's almost a fifteen percent reduction. Congratulations.
Awesome.
Good job.
Does Warren Finance have any questions for our rec director?
Sorry for being too loud.
Yeah, well, it was echoing in the room.
No, 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 I apologize, I should've shut the door when I went out.
They can't shut the door, but I wanted to do that. That's why I flushed on that.
This budget doesn't include the stipend, right?
No.
No stipend, no. It has a three, three point five percent increase like all the other salaries.
Do we know what that figures?
Uh, no, it's on my head now.
No, okay. And will we be using any of the recreation fund?
Well, I think because the board was just presented to it, presented with this tonight, and we're gonna look at the history of some of them, I think it'll be a good conversation for the board to have. Tom and I were just talking about that.
The fund, if we're gonna use any of the fund that we just got presented, those, the reserve fund.
By the way, you know, for your sign, you have a reserve fund. Rather than waiting for this to be, this budget to be approved, I have no reason why she couldn't use a reserve fund to pay for the sign.
I think part of the conversation was knowing that the project in 109 is gonna impact like what that may look like, and they go waiting, so they could check it out.
That's fine.
She's gotta wait, she's gotta wait till it's planned before she...
My question is, are you tugging those signs on 109 or a sign at the rec field itself?
At the rec field. Well, sort of both, and that's...
So people can know where the field is.
That's fine, if it needs to wait, that's okay.
We can tell purchases, just don't put it up.
Yeah.
So Jen, we'll have, we'll have all of those figures like the, with the stipend in their, in their budget. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the finance committee? Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, miscellaneous budget presentation.
All right, so if it's okay, we'll start with Conservation Forest because Mr. Benjamin is here, do you wanna come on up?
I have social services, do we have?
No, that's all, yeah.
Okay.
It's all, we're gonna go through with it, just kind of, so Michael Benjamin... You all remember Michael Benjamin, the chair of the Conservation Forest Committee? So two parts here. One, he's gonna talk about the budget itself, and then we're gonna talk about the forester, which is more a part on Dan. But do you want, your current budget last several years has been three hundred and fifty dollars.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so what are you looking for?
Well, I was looking for five hundred until I heard about the funds for the forestry fund and the conservation committee fund. So I don't know what you can do with that, or what I, the committee can do with that. So that aside, the work that we've been doing on the committee is to look at both of our three town-owned properties, the Hibo-Hibo Lot, the Town Farm Lot, and the newly, I assume it's acquired, landing, land next to the Holsom Lake Land. But we took a site visit last fall on the Hibo-Hibo Lot, Dan went out with us, and we found some damage to the stream that runs parallel with the Hibo-Hibo Lot. ATVs have been running through that, creating some erosion, a lot of erosion problems. So with that in mind, we asked for an update on the management plan for that, and we can talk about that in a minute. But we wanted to put up some signs to indicate, hey, this is town of Acton Land, conservation land, and do the same thing on the Town Farm Lot. So that's why the budget, we're requesting a three hundred, from three hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars to pay for those signs. And the other thing that we've been kicking around and which hopefully we can work on in the next couple of months is some way to educate the public and educate the schoolchildren in Acton through either the elementary school or through the homeschool community in Acton. The Town Farm Lot is just history laying there, and it really deserves to have some, some type of work done to show that. I mean, it was a big part of the town. There's a cemetery out there, foundations, wells, you know, it's, it's pretty cool. So that's, that's the progress that we're going on. I plan to come in maybe this week, maybe next week, to order some signs based on the three hundred and fifty dollar budget. That won't be enough signage for both lots, but it's a start. And if we up the budget to five hundred, that would cover the signage for that. Just to educate the public, when they're out there walking, riding their ATVs, four-wheelers, hunting, they know where they are, and, and maybe they might respect the land a little bit more.
Well, is there anything that you think that we should be, you're saying it's town property, that we should be doing to prevent the erosion control?
So I got in touch with the game warden in this area, Warden Thistlewood, I understand he was a, used to be a deputy sheriff here in New York County. But he's the land assistance warden in the state. So he came in, he had some signs that the state would offer us, but they don't, they're like no trespassing, no ATVs beyond this point, no ATVs, those kinds of signs. And what we're looking for is a more friendly approach, that we can just explain that this is public land, you're welcome to use it, but don't destroy it. And he said, once we can get out there, the road is impassable because it's snowy now, but they can patrol that and, and maybe help educate people.
Well, I think that's, my question is, if it's a road in the way, and it's becoming an environmental issue, you know, it's washing down next to the waters and that, is it something that we should be possibly, is the conservation committee look at maybe having that repaired or something, or make it sort of stabilize the area?
It, it, the road has been eroded since the last logging operation when we were developing the harvest of the Hibo-Hibo Lot. But it's, it's more the stream that runs parallel with the road.
Yeah.
And the stream is fifty to a hundred feet from the road. They made trails that go into the stream up and down.
See, that's what'll block them.
Is the stream on town property?
Yes. It's the headwaters of the Little River, as I understand.
That's one of the concerns, because it is a headwater.
Yeah.
And the game warden said his agency would be more than happy to help regulate that and educate people. The other thing that we talked about is getting in touch with ATV clubs in the area. We're trying to find out if there's, is one in Lebanon. The one in Sanford, I guess, is not very active now, but...
I believe there's one now, and, go ahead.
December would disband it, I used to be the secretary, and they no longer exist.
I, I believe there's a new one, they've started up here over in Newfield or Shapley's and there.
Yeah, it's like a snowmobile ATV club.
Yeah, yeah, and that locker and those guys are doing, that might be someone to contact.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe that will help educate members to, you know, use the road, use it. And the other thing that the game warden said he would, could do if we hadn't, if the town hasn't done it, is to look into the, it's a discontinued road, but how is it discontinued? Is it discontinued to the county, was it discontinued to the town? Did it revert back to the adjacent owners like some of them do? So that's, that's...
Well, I think the problem with the Hibo-Hibo is, is a right of way down through there, all the way to Lebanon, so you can't stop them from going down through unless you put gates, bars, and that's a big deal.
Who is, who is it a right of way for? Is it for the adjacent landowners or for the...
The landowners down through there. So the only way you're ever gonna be able to stop anybody from going down, everybody would have to agree not to let somebody on it, and that's kind of impossible.
The way the game warden explained it is they can use the road, but they can't go walking.
Well, exactly.
So then you would need written permission, and if there was any use off from the road, a game warden could stop that person and say, where's your written permission?
And that's where the...
Yeah, 'cause I thought in the state of Maine that you had that, you know, on the actual four-wheeler trail, or have permission by the homeowner, correct? Or the landlord.
For or on a right of way.
Or a right of way, yes, public way, which you're, yeah. I, I mean, it sounds to me like if you can get a hold of a four-wheeler club, that would be the best way, 'cause I know the, the clubs usually will make team, those spots, make it so that, you know, it keeps them in, within the trails and stuff.
Right. The stream isn't in the road.
Yeah.
But as you know, when you, you start going through puddles, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and then you can't drive down right now.
So they go around, but they make up the ones.
The road's now fifty feet wide.
Go side by side now then.
The committee's been working pretty hard, and, you know, it's a good, good group of folks and interested in conserving and, and doing some forestry work, and doing it in a way that is responsible, and maybe educational to the public on what good forestry is and what good conservation is, so.
So a hundred and fifty dollar increase unless we can, like I said, the board's gonna look at these and I expect there'll be some discussion next week, so possibly we can get some signs purchased out of what's there now and maybe flatline the budget?
Yeah, I know there's also talk of potentially looking at a forest management update, which would potentially be something that might come down along the costs.
Right, and we talked about, we got a legal opinion that's gonna go back on town meetings, so that's not something you're hoping for for April, it's a...
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
But we, we kinda discussed that at the committee, I said that it would have to go to town, that we're already tight, but that would be something that we're probably better later, just because of how close the schedule was. We did talk about that at the last committee meeting.
Because of the damage done and the storm damage that we've had, nobody has a clear idea of what damages out beyond what you can see from the road. So, and it's high, it's been twenty, twenty-five years since the plan was done, it needs to be updated, and this is...
Is the plan, not to overstep sentimentally, the last time you and I had spoken about it, he was going to update it or at least give you a quote for updating it, do we have that? Because if it's as simple as that quote, we might still be able to get it on there.
Part of that discussion, we asked if you two could meet to get that and buy it to the...
And, and I think he should talk to you about that. I don't wanna be the middleman between, you know...
Well, I'm gonna have the information so I can present it to the board, see if we can get it on the article, but we all guarantee that we're gonna present a full budget next week, so.
I'll urge Steve to talk.
Next couple of days or it's gonna be another time.
I mean, it could be a not to exceed, talk about...
Could, depending on what the board agrees, yeah? All right, so we'll work on that, that's what we can do. All right, so the other piece, and I'm not sure if you want him to say it, but it's the forester.
Yeah, no, he knows, 'cause the committee kinda was aware of it last, 'cause I, so a couple of weeks ago, I called the forester, 'cause one thing that we were looking at on the budget was the forester stipend. And over the years, the little, little history that I learned when I came on the committee, the forester did a lot of work with the code enforcement officer, so the stipend was well warranted because they were going up, the code enforcement officer's doing a lot of work. Over the time, that has kind of differentiated, so the forester hasn't been doing as much work with the code enforcement officer. And there's been some previous committee concerns about the forester coming in and making recommendations and then potentially being the individual who's gonna go make the cuts. There's concerns for potential conflicts and just that people brought up. So one thing that we're looking at is we look at how we have many other positions in town that are on call. We have attorneys, we have, we have other people who, one, we need a service done there, who we call in, they kinda come and do the service, we pay a fee, and that's something that we're looking to consider for the forester. So when he comes in, he doesn't get a stipend, but we have to do a forest management plan or if we have to do any work, he would be the individual that we call and he would get paid a fee that the board would, I guess, decide. Per diem type thing. We felt like it'd be a little bit more clean, take away some of those concerns and conflicts and interests, but still maintaining the forester who, you know, working with him personally has such a wealth of knowledge, I personally learned so much.
Well, I believe we got rid, we got rid of some warrants to do the log, and that's why.
All the tree removals.
So the work isn't as consistent as it was. So that was part of, one of the things that we talked, and he, when I talked to Steve, I talked to him individually, he seemed fine with it, he actually was in favor of it. And then we brought it up to the committee as well, and they seemed pretty in favor of us.
So are we gonna have to put an article forward to get rid of the full, the stipend?
No, the, no, the idea...
I thought there was something to do with one of the...
The idea, I mean, he's gonna, the forester's gonna stay on the committee.
Yeah.
And that's the, the article. There's an article that, that created the committee, joined them together, put them on there. The financial piece is, is up to the selectmen.
Yeah, okay.
So that'll be a personnel agreement between...
I wasn't sure if we had a, if there was some warrants, but we had to have one, so, okay.
And to be, just to be clear, when I first got on the committee, there was a conflict or assumed to be conflict, 'cause Steve was the chairman.
Yeah.
So I've assumed that role now, and if there's any discussion that might have him gain from that, he abstains. But the, the information that he provides, the technical information is, is...
I think what happened, 'cause I was, I was, I was the lead on that point, I just, I don't, I don't realize, I don't think he realized, people didn't realize that that was such a big deal. Tell us brought the light, and I think that's why he figured it out, you know, he just didn't think it was a big deal.
Well, he, even up to that point, he was very careful.
Yeah.
As a licensed forester, we're bound by ethics, like other professions, and, and that conflict of interest is there.
Oh, definitely.
I'll say, in every meeting where he, he is very, very conscious of, this is just my profession, you don't have to take it, you don't have to take it, like, he's very conscious about that, even in meetings today.
He does a good job.
He does a great job. He is, he's a wealth of knowledge, we don't want to learn anything about forestry, like technically, talk to him.
So we're not going to increase that line, we're gonna run it out as an hourly, once we'll have an agreement, you'll have an executive session at some point. So we won't increase that line based on the, the need of switching. So we're all set with that, and we'll present that information to Warren Finance once we put it together.
Won't increase my line, I'm sorry.
The forestry stipend line.
Okay.
Thank you.
It does sense and raise a...
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the finance committee have any questions for forest...
Conservation committee. Joe, does Joe have a question?
No, did Joe have a question?
I don't see any, I just drew a blank there.
All right, so the miscellaneous ones, I'll help you out. Health officer, that's going to, she's got no supply request, so next week you'll see that as just a three percent, three and a half percent increase on the salary.
Yeah.
General assistant, same thing, we, we don't need to make an increase on that, so we're gonna leave it at the thousand dollars, like that, a thousand or two thousand, but a little check. No increase, we have no need unless you've got something to add to that. The only other one for Goat Hill, so in the past, they've asked for five hundred dollars. Remember, it's town property, they work very hard, a lot of volunteers to maintain it. They'd like us to consider covering the quarter potty for the year rather than the five hundred dollar donation, which we, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so fifteen hundred dollars, so there is a slight increase there. But a lot of people in town utilize it and...
Well, yeah.
So we'll send that quote over to the Warren Finance as well. So we'll send that, um, quote over to the Warren Finance as well, we've, uh, pardon us, can we send us something already? That's the other, only other miscellaneous items that we have, that we haven't covered. Um, everything, we'll have to say that'll be presented next week, so if we miss something, we can certainly bring it up then.
Okay, um, so seeing where finish up the budget stuff, is there any questions from the finance committee on any of the budget stuff they just went over, just to clear?
Or that we think we might have missed? Um, you got your social services, we're gonna go through these, you gotta decide which ones are going on the warrant.
Oh, is that right?
Thank you, Leslie. So, and I have it right in front of you, social services, you got a list in front of you. Tom now has my list, so.
As I understand it, what we've done, you've gone through the list, you had made a request of everyone to provide financial information. Uh, so they were all, uh, asked to provide very similar information, some of them have chosen not to provide it.
Um, so, yeah, and just to update the finance committee, so there are two, um, and for full transparency, right, wrong, or otherwise, it's done. We did reach out to Lifelight and, um, I don't know what's back.
Uh, American Red Car?
No, we didn't reach out, we reached out to, um, so when you guys originally got this, there was no request from Lifelight, and there was no request from, what's that, the Southern Maine Agency on Aging? So there were zero on both of them. I did reach out to them, they they offer a lot to the town of Acton, they're very important.
Wheels is one of their big projects you do.
It's huge at Acton, and they were, they're both, they were oversized, one of them sent it to a steel box. So we have now, you'll see numbers in there, and we will email you of the documents when I tell you we got them in the last hour, I got them. So I have the financials, I have everything, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
The very two on the bottom.
Greater Wakefield Day One.
Yeah, those are brand new, and I have, uh, the emails printed out from December, they did not respond with the financials, the annual reports, so.
But they're still in there.
Um, it's not up to me to cross them, I'm gonna cross them before.
No, I understand. Sweetster is, is, uh, is this a, uh? New organization?
No, they've been around for a while.
Well, they're not on here.
Oh, on here, oh, sorry.
Is she at Martha's new? Um, Sweetster is the first time they've requested money from us. So, yes.
And what do they do?
Uh, it's mental health, they provide mental health services.
And do, does Acton benefit from that?
They have like a hotline, they just have a new office in Sanford.
Yeah, and you know about this group?
I, I, through my work, we're kind of, we, we work very closely.
Good organization.
Great organization.
It's my recommendation, based on the emails that we sent, that we remove Greater Wakefield Resource Center on Day One, and we've asked them twice for their financials and annual reports, I mean.
What do they do?
I don't know, cuz I didn't get anything else from them, but a request, I mean.
So they hadn't responded?
They had not responded.
Well, I think we should take.
And they were brand new this year anyways. And then the Red Cross, uh, didn't request money, so.
Did you follow up with them to see if there was a miss site?
Not with the Red Cross, no, because they're a large, we sent an email back in.
So does the Warren Finance Committee have this listing?
The Warren Finance has this listing, yes, and, um, but what it's, what the board needs to decide is, because some of them are, are doubled. So you need to decide how much you're moving forward if you wanna complete the budget next week.
And I can't, don't let it be.
You're gonna stay because of your employment.
Yeah, and I, I also got a contract with these.
Alright, gentlemen, so, let's just go, can I have your copy, Nathan? Well, you're gonna have to decide something, so.
I crossed all of them.
Alright, so, um, York County Community Action has run from sixteen hundred to thirty-five hundred, so you need to decide how much you wanna afford on the warrant.
How much more do they do for us in town?
Well, you, I emailed you the packets, I don't have them, I'm just hoping, I mean, we can, we can put the higher amounts in. Warren Finance has reviewed all these, they might have an input.
Which one are you asking about?
Uh, York County Community Action.
Very first one.
Very first one.
Any comments from the Warren Finance Committee?
Yeah, they, they doubled, and I would think.
Come on, Joyce. I'm sorry, I made everybody else do it.
I'm not allowed to.
I mean, you can still, that's all, absolutely.
Cuz I, I know from them, their biggest thing is heating fuel, they do a lot across the county for heating fuel, they do a lot with housing, they do a lot with getting heat. A lot for this community, so again, cuz I partner with them through my. Employment, so I will say that all those costs and things have increased significantly.
They, yeah, and, um, well, I'm, Warren Finance, Joyce, actually, this is just me, I don't know what the other members are saying. I think the increase is, is, um, for all the good they do, it's too much, it's out of line. Sixteen hundred to thirty-five.
We, and you remember, we have a fuel assistance line, not that I don't take.
We do.
We have a fuel assistance line, and we have a neighbors helping neighbors line as well.
So you're opposed to it?
I am opposed to that, I think that's a big jump. Uh, it's a very big jump, and I thought that Acton-Wakefield Watershed Alliance was practically the same thing as Greater Wakefield.
Can we stick with the first one here? It sounds like you have very similar programs through town funding that offer direct services to town residents. So I'd suggest we leave it at its current funding level and.
I agree.
Strike that back to sixteen hundred.
Alright, so Southern Maine Agency on Aging is flatlined, we're good with that one. Uh, Traptan Center is good, Kids Free to Grow is good, uh, York County Shelter actually went down with five hundred dollars, and we double checked that to make sure it wasn't a typo, so we're gonna take that one as lower. Lifelight went up a dollar. Um, Acton Public Library, uh, went up a little, less than, about a thousand.
Let's add about three percent, looks like.
Yeah, let's increase salary, increase like all that ones. York County, uh, Acton Chapel Youth Corps went up a thousand dollars. You guys good with that one?
So I'm sure they had salary increases too.
Acton Wakefield Watershed stayed the same, uh, Saco River Corridor went up two hundred and fifty dollars.
Does anybody know anything about this organization? But they do?
Yeah.
Hey, we don't know who they are and what they do, I, I mean, somebody must, uh, perhaps has to misjudge this, but without having history on it, there's a maximum.
We gotta look at it, we gotta, we gotta look at these like we do all our departments. We're asking all our departments to stay as close to zero, the same idea with these.
And I'm sorry, I'll print off a minute, when I sent you the four hundred page document of all the social services.
I, I did look at all, uh, Sherry Dine, they used to run Free Rivers.
Yeah, but there was no.
Is running that.
You know, I have.
We're only in it because of a little bit coming out of Balch.
Is that the criteria historically has been used, is what impact do they have on Acton? And if we can't identify what that is here, then why are they on the list?
Does the Warren Finance have any issue with us flatlining that one? I was just gonna say he might, cuz it goes behind Flatiron Road, I think.
Reading the paperwork, they were issued, uh, most of the work that Saco River did this year was Olden Door. A, a lot of work, Olden Door, yeah. Myself personally, uh, I would, I would rather, they, they, they have control all the way down to the ocean, you know what I mean, from Balch all the way down. And I don't know, myself personally, I'm against giving them any money at all, but I surely wouldn't give them any more than what I've been asked.
So we'll flatline that one, seven hundred, any other? We're gonna trust that the Warren Finance will come up as we go through these, so that we don't, you know. Carrion Unlimited has flatlined at eight oh one, uh, Acton Chapel.
Do you know who these people are?
Actually, I found the, um, Saco River Corridor paperwork, um, and what they did in Acton was there was two sites where they tested for E. coli. That's what they did for us last year.
Seven hundred seems fair. The original seven hundred seems fair, still?
I mean, they must be funded, otherwise.
Alright, so Carrion Unlimited, we're gonna flatline, the Acton Chapel Historical Society, which is, you know, right here in town, goes to the heart, twenty-five is a five hundred dollar increase. Any concerns with that one? Uh, Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery.
Are they the ones that handle, um, the Lincoln School?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, Warren Finance, uh, did, um, have a question as to what they've actually done at the Lincoln School. They've actually done any of the work.
Okay, I'll see if I can answer that. Alright, so, um, Veterans Cemetery, we said it was okay, the food pantry is staying at twenty-five hundred. Cornerstone Visiting Nurse, um, is flatlined, and they had in their report how many people they serviced in Acton. Uh, Main Public Broadcasting, I have to believe that's a typo, but. Uh, do you have, who, one of you had their packet handy, can you, while we still go on, can you look at Main Public Broadcasting, please?
I didn't think they had ever been on it before.
I wouldn't fund that at all.
I don't know why we're funding this.
It's, it's a, a one-sided. I, I can't really explain it without being. I don't think it's fair on the other half of the town.
Look, if, if it, if it is a typo, previously a hundred dollars, that, that, that doesn't do any good anyway, so. I mean, no, it's not gonna make a difference in anyone's. Let's take them out.
Yeah, okay, all set, ladies. Uh, Volts Lake Improvement, this is, the Volts Lake and Great East, these are two were removed last year. And there's conversation about whether or not they were, you know, inadvertently moved, we had some conversation about Article forty-three and what the plan was kinda going forward. I think it was Thomas specifically told me to make sure they get back in.
To Balch, I had a request from, uh, the folks over there involved in that. I don't know why it was zeroed out in the first place, we have all of our other lakes, or many of our other lakes, I've received.
The reason why, the reason why it was zeroed out was because, um, Great East Lake, it was all because of Great East Lake Association. And what happened with that whole deal with Martell, suing the town, we decided to take all of them out, just to be boom done. And it wasn't.
We were giving them money to sue us.
Is that all passed now? Is so appropriate to restore?
But one thing, did, did they send, I, I, I don't remember seeing the information for Great East Lake.
Yes, it was.
Okay, I, I just didn't see it.
On the, on those, Volts Lake does have a problem with invasive plants, and I think that's very appropriate for the town. But I would still take Great East out.
Why?
Because they're, they have, they go.
The only concern I have.
They have money, they're.
Well, the only concern I have is, last year, I think it was you, Leslie, that said you don't know where the money goes.
I think it was two years ago. I mean, it's, I mean, I, I closely read the paperwork that they sent this year, they're doing thirty-nine thousand boat inspections over the summer.
They're paying people to do those inspections.
I mean, that's the same as ASYCC.
Is still free of invasive plants.
I'm sorry?
Great East is still free of invasive plants, they've had a number of, of catches at the boat inspections and. I mean, I live on the lake, I'd like to see that lake preserved, uh, because
I have no problem with this one.
There's a lot of tax money around that lake.
Oh, you bet. Yeah, there is, and, uh, I, I, what, the only concern I have of both those is I'm, I'm just hoping that all the lake associations, including those two there, are willing to do something with our Article four to three issue that we're having.
Well, that's, that's my, my issue too, and no other lake associations are getting money, so only these two. Now, so the others are gonna have.
ASYCC is getting money and it services Square and Mousa.
But that's not a lake association, Jides aren't going to.
Lee?
Great East is providing the service of the, this courtesy boat inspections that is done by ASYCC. So by supporting ASYCC, the courtesy boat inspections are being done on Square and Mousa. Great East doesn't use the AWA, they're not part of that group.
So you do it themselves.
They do it themselves, they hire people to do the boat inspections.
It's funding the same thing. It's supporting boat inspections on those lakes.
I think everybody's agreed, so they, they serve a good purpose.
So we're leaving Volts Lake at two thousand, uh, Great East Lake, they've got a five hundred dollar increase. Flatline it or leave it?
Well, I hope you just make them the same.
What do you mean, make them both two thousand, thirty, thirty?
I don't have a problem with the twenty-five.
Neither do I, to be honest with you. How many inspections have you? Forty-some thousand?
Thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-nine thousand, uh, thirty-nine thousand inspections. That's almost twice what was done on, on Square and Mousa.
Alright, so we've got it, we gotta sort this one out here, gentlemen, so a couple of you are okay with the twenty-five, Dan's saying maybe flatlined, uh, David, what's your thoughts?
I, I just flatlined it.
Alright, so, so who didn't, and John flatlined, so two thousand for them. Alright, uh, Sweetster, um, for a general assistance piece, I would encourage you to leave that five hundred in there. And then we agreed to remove the last three, so this will get updated and sent around.
I got two, actually. Kids free to grow, does anybody know anything about them, whether or not they provide services?
Do you have your packet?
It was three hundred pages long. So you're aware of them and they provide.
We are aware of them, I mean, I don't, they don't list them, yeah.
I, I saw they were in, but I, I checked with the school and they didn't know.
I don't personally know of them, no, I don't.
That's why I asked the question.
We can, we can review, certainly review it.
And then Tafton Center, that's the YCA.
Yeah, that's the Elderly Center.
It's the Elderly Center.
So we use that.
We have people there.
It's landscape, they have a separate building by the Elderly Lodge.
You can discount it bingo, Lee, when you get it started. Alright, so any other budget? And that's it, we're done. Budget questions, budget lines, anything else? We're gonna move everything forward that you guys have talked about and see what our number looks like next week. Sure.
Thank you for all the work and rounding us all up and keeping us on schedule and everything.
I'll check back if I have any more the day after.
So far, you've done a great job.
Now the pressure's on.
Alright, let's, uh, think about dinner and not a midnight snack, can we move on, Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, we are gonna move on to Greg Martinez's request.
Hey, folks, thanks for your time. Probably all have an inkling of why we're here, uh, we are looking for the, asking the board to consider a recreational marijuana retail use in the commercial zone. And I, though, you know, I understand for a lot of people it's a controversial topic. Uh, however, uh, in your packets that just been distributed, those are numbers from the Office of Cannabis Policy State of Maine, and I think, you know, the demand is obvious when you look at those numbers. I, I, there's a significant presence in this town already. I'm going to defer because I'm certainly no professional in this area, it's, it's, uh, just an opportunity for me. Um, and, uh, I'm gonna introduce Pete Transfante, who's been an integral part of, uh, the legalization of cannabis in the state of Maine. And also has, he's also a city councilman in San Francisco, has helped them write ordinances and things like, things of that nature. And, uh, you know, I, I propose that, uh, you know, you take advantage of his, uh, his skills and his experiments, if you consider this, and we will certainly work very closely, we would love to work closely with you on developing a policy here in town.
How you guys doing? Yeah, my name is Peter Transfante, I'm owned and operated Uncle Pete's Relief, uh, since two thousand eleven. We've worked with the state of Maine, I work with legislation, Senator Harrington on bills, uh, all throughout the state of Maine, we work with legislation. What we're looking for is to do an adult rec, uh, store down at the Iron Tales Complex, separate, uh, all through OCP guidelines, security, everything. Um, and also if we could, I've also, I, I do palpable care into life. And, um, we would like also if you could consider the, uh, medical marijuana as well, cuz you can separate it right at the store, so you can't bring it in. Um, I would like to take care of this whole community, several hundred of my patients, um, are from Acton. And I was blown away when I went to a fundraiser for, for Acton for a local community member that was, uh, palpable care, and we realized that, um, I don't wanna store anywhere else. You have a, a wonderful opportunity because of the tourist attraction you have there. Um, it is a tourist destination at Iron Tales, of course you have the Acton Fairgrounds across the street. This is the foot traffic that if I was to have to do a store, retail store, it would be right here. Uh, this would be very successful, we could get into negotiations on percentage, um, so it's lucrative off of the retail for the city, uh, for the town. So we're not looking to just profit here, I've done this for fourteen years, uh, I've helped write an ordinance. I'm also vice president of Main Cannabis Union, and we are affiliated with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers. You may know that they're, if you have shipyard employees here, um, same union, we have an office in Washington DC and a full legal team. So one of the things we can offer is not for you to be trapped like Lebanon, that's a mess, I'm from Sanford, we don't like that either. Uh, but we can help you write an ordinance, um, so there is no trap, so you don't have umpteen million people trying to come in every time you have, um, city council for a storefront. So you can put in the number you want, revise it every year or so many years.
Put in a number of outlets.
Yes, sir, you are the municipality, you are the sole control of this, I helped do this. So we didn't want at the state level, uh, for you guys to get inundated just of, of the town. We wanted it so municipality has final say, and I think that's the safest way to do this. Um, this is an industry that is the number one agriculture industry in the state. Um, this is an industry that is the number one agriculture industry in the state. Um, it's amazing. We, we, we took down lobster last year. And, uh, corn this year and potatoes. We are the number one industry. So the revenue. Lobster, don't smoke popular lobster, I guess. Yeah, yeah, it's true. And we work with the lobster association. There's a same ti- a union, so we're trying to help them get benefits. One of the wonderful things we can offer is, uh, where Mr. Martinez is closed during the winter, um, now we can go after their core staff and offer them benefits. Because I brought benefits into the state of Maine for the cannabis industry. That's why I started that union. We were losing employees when they hit thirty. And they have kids and they, oh my God, they have insurance. They were going on main care and we find out that it's a tax wage, you know? So if you go sell your house, they're gonna recover it. Um, we wanted to do better than that. It's the number one industry, so I did bring in, um, benefits. Retirement benefits, healthcare, dental, optical. Same thing if you are hired, come to our work room. And what we do wanna do, um, we have, for the medical part, you guys have somebody right in town that writes scripts. It's amazing. So we're going to employ her to write act if we get this, uh, medical aspect of the store. She can come down and write the scripts, which is, which is legal for you to buy medical marijuana. Uh, you don't need that for adult rec. You need your ID twenty-one and over. Uh, the difference between medical and rec is just strength. It's not the flower. It's like the edibles. Um, you want to, um, it's, uh, two hundred milligrams and lower for adult rec. Cause if somebody doesn't have the experience and they're having surgery or they have a bad doctors, you don't want, you know, for them to just that experience. You wanna have a, a licensed caregiver, medical marijuana to talk to, so they can kinda go through their journey if they choose that way for self-medication. Um, so what we're asking for, um, is a signature to, to do adult rec and medical marijuana, uh, from your municipality. And again, we would work with all of you. I live in the next town over. I've, I've sat on the damn coalition with you. Um, I, uh, some of you know me. I have a very good reputation. We've never done any infractions since two thousand eleven. And a lot of this industry across the country, um, it's like three years and you're, you're done. Because there's no banking. Um, we, we work, we work with credit unions. I'm actually working with Sanford Institute for Savings.
I'm sorry, could you back up? Three years and you're done? What?
There's usually, you, you, because of the difficulty staying in this business.
Because of handling cash?
Yes, because they usually don't, don't bank it.
You can't bank it.
Right. So you have, so we gotta get creative. As soon as my wife and I, um, have enough for a bill, we go right down to the credit, uh, not credit union, to repub, cash and pay our bill. And, and so there's no money in the house, cause we don't want that at all. Um, but we are working with the union on a federal level, with Representative Joyce, because he co-signed the banking law. And, uh, are very, very, very much involved with, uh, the cannabis as a, a full-fledged industry for the United States.
So when you said what you're looking for is a signature, my understanding from speaking to, um, Gabby at the state level is that when the town of Acton has to vote to opt in to medical and or adult use.
For retail, yes. And, and opt in for, for adult.
So it will be an actual vote by the voter, okay?
Yes. Yes.
So what, just to be clear here, when he, cause you kinda, when you said you were just looking for a signature, I mean.
I didn't know if you were opt in or not.
No, so the town of Acton has not opted in. So just so the, catch the border.
Based on a vote that was taken.
Huh?
But, it, it, we're not on the ballot.
We have, no, we have not. We had a mandatory when it first, when it first went in. No.
Oh, I thought there was some action.
No. Acton hasn't opt, opted in. If you don't opt in, you're automatically out, essentially. So what he's asking for is for you to put.
Yes, yes. To opt in.
For, no, for you to put a ballot question forward to ask the voters to opt in.
Sure, yes.
So, and if you don't, and this is a conversation I've had with Greg, if you choose not to do that and not to make that decision, that's five of you on be, you know, on behalf of the town, they can petition. And they can get ten percent of the last gubernatorial election. And that would force a vote, asking the voters to, it would force a ballot question, referendum, to get it on a ballot that way.
Sure, we would rather work with you in, in the community.
Right, absolutely. I just wanna make sure the board understands.
To you. I don't wanna do any unpleasant experience regarding the policy.
How many voters were in the last two?
There's a good amount. There's.
Thirteen hundred and eighty-nine.
So it'd be a hundred and forty signatures you'd need on petition.
Forty.
It's something, something, this is, this is kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
Um, so being a border town, when all this medical marijuana stuff started going and all the land started selling, uh, these people from farms, they were coming over, they're all coming over buying properties, they all kicked off. Yeah, yeah, they did. They did. But, um, I know when I go through Lebanon and I see six or seven of them or whatever, bang, 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 bang. Uh, it's hard to believe. They're, they're. It's hard to believe they can stay in business. I don't know. I, I try to stay away from that.
But all the years for.
I just, I, yeah, but there's always a price there. So, um, this is, again, this is the number one industry. We will help you write an ordinance if you guys opt in or if you guys vote. Uh, we would do a workshop. I would bring my legal team. Uh, I'll bring my secretary, Jim Belcher, um, for the union. Uh, we would not just. I think before we get to that point, we're, 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 we're still, hold the brakes a little bit. I think my recommendation to the rest of the board is whenever we have anything big like this, we make everybody do a petition, come to us, and then we put it on. Uh, that way there we just don't, you know, favoritism, this, that. It's, this legit goes on. And then we let the town people decide. I think that's really the best way to do this.
I agree. There's pros and cons to it. I don't think it should be up to five people. I think, like you said, getting a petition.
Well, I, I think you just say that again, Dan. I think that's.
I said there's pros and cons of leaving it up to five people.
Yes.
I think a petition is the best way to get the majority of the town sort of acting to say whether or not they wanna do it. I think it's their choice.
Oh, perfect. If we just start throwing one article on, just, or uses on, whatever. Yeah. Just on a website, that would be set a bad precedent. And what I'd like to also show you, I agree, and we will, we will work with you guys. And if we have to have a workshop to get language, we will be available for all that.
Public hair and stuff, fairytale news.
Um, also, if you look on the last page that, uh, I got the, the printout for, uh, it says Gmail on the top of the staple. If you go down to Acton, um, even though you're not opted in, you really, you, you have twenty-eight businesses in town. That are medical marijuana, if you don't know.
Well, care, well caregivers.
Yes.
I mean, don't, yeah, so, so no, caregivers can cultivate and distribute under the current Maine law.
Correct.
It's different. So don't, I don't, don't scare them.
No, no, I'm just letting you know.
There are, there are legal caregivers that the state is overseeing.
They're world-class growers here.
They are.
So one of the other things, if we do get a store, we are going to offer them, we wanna sell their product right there at Iron Tales. We wanna take care of the whole, whole community while we're doing this. We don't wanna just profits here. I didn't do this for profit, Dan.
So what are the twenty-eight? I'm trying to understand that.
Who?
So what it is, is those, so look at caregivers. You don't need municipality.
Indivisible, yeah.
You don't have it.
I got you. Alright.
Right, cause they're not all on the open up.
And personally, it seems good in the law, but I think at the end of the day, it's like.
Yeah, cause if they don't know about it, they're illegal, so.
I said, I think, I, I think the data that you provided is great, but I think, I think they, for me at least, it is letting the people of Acton have the final say as to what they would say.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, do the rest of you?
Yeah, no, I'm.
I'm fine with that.
How I feel, too.
Yeah, me too. I could just want to watch. If you were to have this facility there, is it a growth facility as well or just a sale?
No, no growth, no growth. Straight retail. Nope, no smell. It's the storefront. We want, uh, wrecking medical.
So no smell?
So if you move forward with a petition, will you be asking Acton to opt in to just the medical or the medical and the adult use?
We would like to do both if it's possible from that one store.
Well, it's your petition, so you're gonna word it however you so choose, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you were favorable for both, then we'll put that in petition. I have, um, a lot of, uh, patients. And again, I have several hundred right from Acton, so I'd like to have the medical as well if we go, if the town does the petition and we go forward.
Well, you're gonna, that, so just, I mean, you would write the petition, so it would be up to you to decide if you wanted to do it in one article. You know, or take chances in doing two to, you know, two together. That's up to you. But the town wouldn't get involved in the, in, in the petition writing piece of it. I mean, we can give you, you know, some. But we would like to, before you get signatures, to at least send it to legal to make sure it's written properly. So to save you guys the time as well.
Yeah, we can meet. We can meet with you and, and hash out anything and, 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 you know.
Well, let, we'll start by writing it up.
Get it written.
I think you write it up. You send it to Jennifer. She can take it and, you know, share with us, but send it off to council.
Just make sure what you're, what you're asking people to sign is okay.
I'm sorry.
Use an R lawyer to look over there.
Well, it, it, this is something that Maine municipal's actually recommended recently, and I'll, I'll tell you why. For example, Chapley is dealing with the fireworks ordinance right now.
Yeah, yeah.
They, somebody petitioned for a fireworks ordinance. They got enough signatures, they moved it forward. But it wasn't legal to put on the ballot. So it's Maine municipal's recommendation that if they've got the signatures, you know.
Well, I understand that. But say if they come up with a petition and it's written, and ain't very good, we send it to our lawyer. And we're in charge for the opinion for something they're bringing ahead.
Right, I mean, uh, Maine municipal, just to say if, if they would move it forward on a ballot or not, is all they're gonna say. They're not gonna, they're not gonna write it or do it, or let them pay for it.
I think there'd be a fee or something for that.
I mean, he said he had a legal team, so.
Nope, if you got a legal team, then you're good.
Yeah, we have the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace.
We just don't wanna, we don't wanna put it on a ballot if, you know, I mean, if the consequences aren't.
So are you okay if I, if I try to word it for medical and rec on that?
That's all up to you, sir.
As far as how, how the articles are written, does it, do they have to be separated out or can we?
That's your choice.
You can separate them.
You, you know, you, if you're gonna do it, you know, I mean, if you did two.
That's a strategy.
Like, you don't wanna.
That's a strategy.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna mislead anybody. If they want it and they don't, you know.
Right, but some might support one, not the other. Maybe better opt-in, some would like to, that's strategy. That's completely your choice. So, short of this board signing the petition, if they so choose, they're not gonna be involved in anything except for the timeline.
Okay.
Public caring timeline, that's.
And a recommendation.
And, well, it's, it's gonna be on a referendum, so.
It's gonna be a referendum vote. Okay, okay.
Okay, so when would you like to hear from us for this?
When you have it written.
Okay, you guys are awesome. Thank you.
A hundred and forty-five.
A hundred and thirty, but we'd like to see it with words written. I wanna make sure that the references.
We won't do anything till you see it. How's that?
Alright.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Yep.
We need to work.
Okay, oh, uh.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, do we have?
Mr. Nash, you got a question? Come on on, I'll bring you, you're already away. Keep going.
So I would urge you to, oh, because my name's Richard Nash. I live on Milton, New York. Was part of the committee a couple of years ago that essentially put this to a vote. The town voted against it. Uh, just so everybody remembers that. And I think you're saying what happened this time?
Well, we're not gonna get it, we don't wanna get into discussion right now on whether or not we oppose it. We'll let them bring it forward to it, then we can.
Well, I just wanna comment on this idea of, of the petition. Neither of these guys are residents of Acton.
Well, they're landowners.
Well, they're, they're property owners. They are voters. So the question, I would ask you the question. Are they eligible to, to, uh, collect signatures and turn it into petition? And I, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm, I'm, as far as any other petition, not a local, and I will double check, then yes. You only have to be a Maine registered voter. So that is correct. But I will definitely confirm that. And Mr. Martinez and I have had that conversation, so he knows it has to be, come from an Acton resident. He's prepared for that.
And just finally, this morning, the legislature's been dealing with this for a long time, trying to figure out, uh, cause the question keeps coming up. Can't the municipalities share in the excise and, and the sales tax money? And the answer so far has been no.
Yeah.
It's in front of him again this year. Uh, and I don't know what the answer's gonna be, so it, it keeps coming up. But there is nothing in this for Acton except trouble. This morning, radio report, the regulatory board of state is, of the state of Maine on marijuana is in trouble. They're being investigated by the legislative, uh, investigation arm. Uh, this is nothing but trouble for this kind of Acton. We don't need it. If anybody wants marijuana, they can go to Sanford or Lebanon. They don't need to be buying it here. We don't, we're end up with a big police force. It's nothing but a disaster for every place that it's been. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, I don't really wanna get, no, we're not debating tonight. We.
You have the right.
Get your petition in. We'll have a public hair and all that crap, and we'll, we'll deal with it later. So, um, any other callers?
Okay, where are we now?
You now have this. You can be to be.
You can be to be request.
Hello, thank you all for listening. I have, uh, I don't have tons of sheets, so I might have to double up a couple. My name's Riley Bacon. I live over in Somersworth. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce.
They have it. Yeah, they already have it.
Oh, they, everybody does already have it. Oh, beautiful, beautiful, yes. Whenever there's a job, well, thank you, Jackson.
More cannabis tonight.
A little bit, but I'm not asking for a store. I'm not asking for money. I'm just asking for a day to hold an event. Uh, bring the community together, uh, twenty-one plus. Uh, we have Afro Man on the books to come perform for us. Uh, we have comedians, music, uh, bring the community together through art, um, entertainment as well. Um, yes, I, I see you definitely wanna say something on this.
No, I'm listening.
Oh, cool, cool, cool. No, yeah, 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 you listen. Love it. Uh, so I used to live in Maine. I worked at WMTW. I worked with, uh, Frank FM, The Wolf, The Bone. Uh, hope to have them there as well. Um, and listening tonight, I would love to have some of, um, you know, your guys' favorite, uh, community members and nonprofits. Come join, come raise some money, uh, come educate the town, uh, or the people there about your town. Uh, come, you have a lot of trails, it sounds like, a lot of snowmobiling, all that fun stuff. Um, so yeah, really, it wouldn't cost you guys a thing. Uh, if we bring this money in, uh, I was hoping to go to Willie's Ale Room, but I think that might, that ship might have sailed tonight, unfortunately. Uh, but I wanna talk to them as well, uh, so they can maybe set up a tent, uh, give some food for the people, obviously.
What are you doing that night in regards to marijuana?
Marijuana, so yes, yes ma'am. Uh, so in regards to marijuana, we would bring together, um, we, it's gonna be the first recreational festival, right? So people can go there.
What does that mean?
Recreational festival? So it's a fest, uh, recreational, um, dispensaries can participate. Right now, only, uh, medical can. They can participate by kind of giving gummies and goodies and things of that nature. We would hold contests for people to, uh.
But how is that legal if we haven't opted in?
I'm.
In Acton, uh, the state of Maine requires that, that Acton opt in before we get into adult use or medical. The only thing that's exempt.
It's their charging.
Because, eh, I mean, Jamal can help. I mean, he's a property owner. He may be able to help. But caregivers, as I understand it, is the only thing that's exempt if a town has an option in. So how is what they're proposing legal?
So the medical.
Introduce yourself to the board, so they know.
My name's Jackson Moorefield. I have, uh, I have a, uh, medical marijuana business town, excuse me. Um, so the way it works is basically what you, like the previous presenters, if you, if wanted the town to opt in, that would go to a vote. These can actually, these events can happen. I call, I have an inspector I deal with regularly at the Office of Cannabis Policy. So I asked him, cause that was when, cause I've, uh, known these guys. And I was like, hey, we're thinking about doing this event. I was like, I don't think it'd even be possible, cause we haven't opted in. Uh, so I called the Office of Cannabis Policy and they gave me the answer that if the town, if they get approval, they can for one, like an event. This isn't like, uh, we're setting up shop or anything like that. So it, it would be, according to them, it's fine if the town approves it.
I guess my, my question is, why Acton? Like, it seems kind of like a random wide.
So we've been, I've had Afro Man booked since last year, and we've had trouble with locations, different, different things of that nature. We weren't able to sell the tickets on event break. We got banned from there. We were gonna be doing it in Brunswick at the, uh, at the campground up there. We were gonna make it a two-day festival, uh, but that ended up being sold. Uh, and they were doing a different event on that day. Uh, so I have Afro Man booked just specifically for that day. It's just gonna be a one-day event, uh, from twelve to nine. Uh, we'll have, you know, security and all that.
Just twelve to nine?
Yeah, well, twelve, yeah, noon to nine PM.
Everybody will be gone by nine.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Music would be done and everything. I figure your ordinance is probably by noise.
Where are boats, is this gonna be again?
What was it?
Where are boats, is this gonna be again?
At Jackson's.
Seventeen twenty-three Milton North.
Corner of Comby Road.
Yes. Where there's, uh, enough parking, it seems like. Uh, there's a map included as well, uh, showing where the vendors would be, where the stage would be, where we would have EMTs, where we would have, uh, food vendors, hydration station, things of that nature. Obviously twenty-one plus only. Um, but should be a, a fun time for everybody.
So the vendors, so as far as the marijuana, they just, they just go around and buy samples?
They, 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 they don't purchase.
Oh, you're giving them away?
They, they just, it's samples and it's a way for the businesses to, like, relate with consumers.
So, so given the way, gives me, gives me, is there any regulation with how much individuals get? I guess that brings a safety concern. If you just get them away, is there any way to regulate saying, like, someone goes to a bar, a bar just says, you're cut off, you're not too much.
Let's use John as an example, yeah. But how do you know when John's had enough?
Something really bad idea.
So, I'm, so we're working that out just because we don't know exactly where we're gonna be, right? So obviously, it's gonna be kind of tailored to the area. And if, I, I guess we could do like punch cards or something. We can make sure.
That would be the best way to do it.
Yeah, something of that nature. So once their card's filled out, sorry, is that enough?
My, my, my biggest question is, you're expecting five hundred plus people?
About five hundred-ish, yeah.
So that's a minimum of two hundred cars.
Yes.
Which we've.
Minimum.
Yeah, so the map that we have there, uh, it seems to be about like a hundred, hundred and fifty. I was hoping to, uh, it can hold a hundred, hundred and fifty cars. Um, I was hoping to talk to Willie's Ale Room, cause I know they got a lot of space too. I was thinking about maybe a little shuttle action.
How you, yeah, I was saying, it's like shuttling, cause they don't want you to eat gummies and stuff.
Exactly. And we don't want people driving, things like that. Uh, we won't be serving alcohol or anything. It's not gonna be cross, you know, contamination on that end. Exactly, and we don't want people driving and things like that, uh, and we won't be serving alcohol or anything, it's not gonna be across, you know, contamination on that end, uh.
My, my, my only issue is, it's, it's hard getting that many cars at one time.
Right.
From three different directions to a vendor.
Right.
Cause where that location is, you're coming from Milton County.
You're coming both ways on Milton, you're coming out of County, you're going up Fox's Ridge from two different ways, you got at least two hundred cars.
And it would essentially kind of bottleneck there, but we're gonna have somebody running traffic in front of Jackson's place, he's got a gate and everything, uh, that we can have cars coming through, and while we're checking them in, direct them where to go and park, that way we're keeping the cars off the streets and, yeah.
Is there an admissions fee for this?
There will be an, an admissions fee, yes.
And what's the organization that's running this?
You, you can be to be, I'm, I'm on the board with them, so we're campus, yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're new, three years, we've been doing, uh, a campus chamber of commerce, where we bring businesses together to talk about the issues that they have.
Are you a nonprofit?
Uh, yeah, well, no, no, uh, non-profit in terms of networking, but when we do events like this, we do that through You Can Laugh, and we do, uh, comedy events.
Is it, is it a for-profit and not-for-profit activity?
It, it would be a for, for-profit activity, covering basis, uh, costs basically, which is entertainment costs, which is crazy.
For-profit activity.
Well, another question I have is, you said that this would be the first, is the expectation that if this were somehow approved, that this would be coming back on an annual basis?
Uh, not necessarily here, um, again, it's, it's really tailored to what we can, what everybody's happy with, is really what it's all about. Um, if, if you guys like it here, and you want us back, and we've kind of proved ourselves, then cool, uh, if not, then I'll kind of just do what I'm doing now and, and kind of pop around and looking for the right spot.
Do you have any other tiny towns in Maine that you would be able to give references from, that you, you had an event at, or even New Hampshire?
Anywhere else.
So I did get a, a recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce of Summersworth, um, but yeah, but we, we do a lot of networking events, I can hook you up with.
Have you done this event in any other towns in Maine?
This one, not, not, not this, this, uh, this size or anything like this, cause we've done comedy events, about five hours, uh, it's kind of mixed with music as well. Uh, I used to do a nonprofit, uh, back home in San Diego, uh, Laffery for a Cure, and I raised money for cancer organizations through all this, um, so that's kind of where I go.
Who owns this property?
It's Jesse, this is Jesse.
Do you have liability insurance?
Yes, uh, one of the members does insurance, so he handles all that aspect, I, I am a real estate agent, but also comedy and TV from what I mentioned earlier.
I just wanna say, I've done similar events, not to the size on the property, with, uh, medical marijuana patients, and it's, they've all been, they've gone on really well, uh, we've had the Nala Brothers Band, I don't know if you guys.
What is the size band, you said about similar size, so what would, you say the size of those events have been?
Um, uh, my wedding was probably like two hundred plus people, uh, another thing with, about the parking, cause I, I recognize that too, just every time I leave my driveway, it's like, go, check this way, this way, this way, plowing the end, um, when you have things like this, it's not like they're, everyone's showing up at the exact same time, like a lot of people are coming later, because there's basically schedule, so some people will come just for show, it's, I can't imagine there'd be five hundred people showing up all at the same time, and then I'll leave.
I don't think it's so much, because if you know, you know the area, you live right there, I live in Fox's Ridge, you have coming, that, up, I guess down from the hill, those cars go fast, so it's not so much, even if you have ten cars, and people are trying to pay attention, that is, like John said, you have like three different directions, plus trying to get in, I don't think it's, I mean, the number is a big thing, but even like a small amount, it's still.
Yeah, it's a tough spot there, cause people do come around that curve, my economy there.
I would, I mean, personally, I'd rather see a more organized, I mean, what we ask for the rental subs fair, after their first year's having, and more people organized planning for parking, like that's, if this were to go through, I would wanna see something more like that, like something to just say.
A parking plan or traffic.
Something more specific to make sure we don't have any accidents with that.
A professional, like Renaissance now uses professional parking.
Well, that, yeah, that's.
We just wanna make sure it doesn't incur a cost on the ton of Acton or any.
Our costs aren't to worry about. Yeah, yeah, and again, no cost to you guys, if anything, I wanna help like raise money for you guys in any way that I could.
So, are you looking for, are you, are you looking for something tonight?
Well, the events in July, I mean, they.
July tenth, I, I would like the, yeah, as soon as possible, just because I can't move forward with any of the other planning and sponsorships and paying Afromen.
So I guess the, the question would be is, you know, is this something the board's considering, and then can, if it is, you know, can you make a, a list of things that you can say, Dan, listen, give us something, you know, veteran writing for a traffic plan, let us see, you know, the security agreement, let us see, you know, your E M T fire.
Just a little concerned about the, if you're paying admission to go in, and then you're serving, uh, they're serving.
It'll be seltzer drinks, yeah, like wink, wink seltzer drinks, uh.
I don't know what that is.
Wink, wink seltzer, so it's cannabis, yeah, it's not alcohol, but they're cannabis based, yeah.
Cannabis.
Very.
So they give you a buzz?
They give, they would give you a little buzz, yeah.
Just like drinking an alcoholic drink, right?
No, no alcohol, no alcohol.
No, but it does the same idea, right?
Oh, I guess, yeah, it's, it's cannabis, it's like an edible, but a drink.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what you get when you pay your admission, or do you buy that in there?
No, it's free. No, they say, let them in. Yeah, no, no sale, just, it, it's free, if somebody comes up and they say, hey, I've, I've had, uh, one, or, you know, if they're at two or something, you cut them off, we just figure out what works for everybody, really.
Did you do that in Summersworth?
Did, what was that?
Not, not with the cannabis.
I, I. Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
You're allowed.
No, they don't, so it's, it's nice, but it's not. It's just a little thing, but, but they are, they're working, they're working on getting, uh, cannabis money for the chamber, cause they're, they're having troubles on that, but that's a whole different side thing.
It's interesting that they posted a recommendation, but they never had the event.
Well, even if they did, it wasn't a cannabis event.
Yeah.
It was a nice, well-written letter.
Correct, uh, Bonnie McNair's, uh, pretty awesome, uh, I was on the F S F A as well, Summersworth Festival Association, and we do a lot of events, setting up and children's events, but this is a little different.
So is there a list of items, so we wouldn't be able to do anything next week, but is there a list of items that you would, cause, you know, to consider, to continue considering this maybe for a March agenda, some of the first meetings, that you wanna see him bring back to, to you guys, or are you not interested in, in it at all?
He couldn't convince me at all.
Okay, that's one, John.
Just leave it at that.
I just, I think it's, you know, if it was at the fairgrounds, I would have less of a problem with it with the traffic, probably, you know.
Regardless of what kind of traffic plan they come together?
I, I would, I would wanna see something to, how do you tell if someone has had enough, a traffic plan, um, and then, I guess, more admission liability, I mean, like if you, you said potentially raise money for the tab, but it's for profit for you folks, so, but those are the two big things, would be impact of safety and, and the traffic plan, would you consider?
What do you think, David?
So what I'm trying to do, is trying to actually figure this out, right, how it's different than say if I, if you took the cannabis part of it, okay, and you added alcohol.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And what you're gonna do is you're gonna charge an admission at a concert.
Right.
With free beer, right?
Yeah.
It sounds like a party.
Right.
Right, between noon time and nine o'clock.
Yeah.
You think anybody's leaving that place that ain't drunk?
Right, right, right.
Okay, now, 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 I'm just using alcohol, that's really bad.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be a bad situation.
Yeah.
Any, anyplace, so, but no, no, I know, I, I know, I know what marijuana does and stuff.
When it's last called a bar.
What?
At last call.
Well, no, yeah, but, exactly, you know, it's like a concert, all that, okay, but that's another whole thing, you know, they got police present, you know, stuff like that, that's a whole nother snare. I'm just trying to figure out how this is different than, you know, alcohol and cannabis, you know, at the end of the day, it's imperative, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, which way you make it out to be.
Right.
Um, but typically, when you go like a concert, you're buying your own drinks and, you know, this and that, and just walk around having, giving them to you, that just doesn't sound like a great idea to me at all.
Right.
And it's like, how do you, how do you enforce how many people have had what?
Have, had what, yeah. How do you get it?
You can't do it, it's, 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 it's a really bad idea, but.
And they're not there for the content.
No.
Oh, plenty, plenty. They're not there for the content.
I, I, I mean, I like a good party and all, I'm just trying to figure out, I, I don't care if you guys are gonna have a big party and do gummies and whatever, but the, what I'm worried about is when they leave.
Right.
Okay, and when they leave Willie's and everything like, is a difference, okay, I'm gonna explain to you the difference. Willie's has to come to us once a year to get an alcohol license, okay, have signed off on it, you do a one-time thing here, and it turns into a complete disaster, what do we do, what's ramifications for us?
Right.
Okay, that's the way we gotta look at it, what's that?
We wouldn't be able to have.
Well, the damage has already been done, you know, at that point, but I, I, I just, I don't know how you, especially with cars, you know.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I've, I've talked to.
That's a really bad spot, you know.
Would the fairground potentially be, like if we reached out to them, would that be like a potentially?
The thing is, the town, the town has not opted into cannabis.
Right, but, but he, I mean, he is right that the, that state of Maine with the one-day event, you're not charging.
They have a free admission, I can say, fine, they're charging admission.
I just don't see it.
I would feel, why don't we take a couple weeks to think about this, alright?
Yeah, there's some information based on what you've heard.
I think there's some things I'd like to check out, before we go any further, I think I understand what you're doing, I assume you're getting paid for the lease of your land?
Uh, no.
Really just made your sponsorship.
I just, it's, I, it would be.
Just something you're interested in doing.
Like the thing, all the, the events I've done in the past, we did, we, uh, charged like a cover to help pay for the van, but I do a lot of, uh, I try to do low and no-cost medication for cancer patients, so I basically have a slush fund from my business of ten percent, that's giving away to people, so.
That's good to know, thank you.
Yeah.
No, I think we take a couple weeks to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I love a good party and all that, but I mean, I just, I just, it's too much gray area for me here, cause I mean, you're, you're, you're talking, we just had him come up and we're talking about, you know, opting in and this and that, but then you turn around and say, okay, well, we can have this big thing here, but we're not charging for it, but.
I think your analogy is a good one, but I need to think about this, so I just need some time.
Yeah, there's some information based on what you've heard, and you can email it, we'll send it to them, and I'll let you know when to go through upcoming, Jennifer.
I still would like to know some locations where you have done something similar to this, if you haven't, that's fine, but if you, Summersworth is not it.
No, definitely not, so Mark's Organics in Kittery, we've done some, we've done Elk's Club.
No, something similar in scope.
In scope and size, uh, the only other one would be, uh, what was it, it was in Massachusetts, we did High Times for Heroes, uh.
The state, the state really is just now allowing these, adult use stuff like, in medical use. Like medical ones happen frequently, but it's for adult use.
We're hoping for the recreational and bring more, more and more people.
Do they have to bring a medical card with them?
Right, and, and we can have a mental tent, but.
This would be an adult use, so they wouldn't need a medical card, but.
Okay, I'm confused, I guess, if we're talking about.
Well, that's, I mean, that was, that's just saying, what the previous people, you know, that are opt-in, so I've been a caregiver in this town for eight years.
Yeah.
And it's like, uh, it's, uh, you know, some, it's comical to me, cause I wouldn't be, people distinguish between medical and recreational marijuana, and what he said is dosages.
There's really no difference.
There's, it's not like when a cannabis plant grows up, it's like, hey, I'm medical, send me over this way, so it's all the exact same stuff, my just, my market's limited a lot to like an actual.
All depends on what the state wants to consider, and that's how they got it all, recreational in the first place, but I think what we're gonna need is a little bit of time to kind of mull this over. I mean, the conversation tonight might have been a little odd, but I think we could probably.
They're just overhearing it.
Well, no, we, we don't get this request every day, so.
I'd like to hear from Sheriff's Department too, see what their opinions are on something like this.
Well, we, we, we will, uh, mull this over, um, do you wanna schedule a couple weeks?
Yeah, I'm thinking the third or the tenth, but I'll let you know in March, we, our budget's got to come worse than.
Okay.
I appreciate you all listening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.